Yeah, you anticipate his moves, that's uh. Six thirty.
I just want to make sure that the people at home or wherever they are can hear me? Is there anybody or is it just like you're recording it? So that's why you're doing it?
Yeah, Doral is gonna try to.
Okay, I just. Okay. All right, um, I apologize, but if I haven't met any of you, I think I've met all of you. Is anyone, is there anybody I haven't met? Okay. It's you two, okay. All right, my name is Peter Whitner. I'm the emergency manager for Utah County. I've been with the sheriff's office twenty-three years. I've done a lot of different things last thirteen years has been with in this role as the emergency manager. In Utah County, our emergency manager comes from the sheriff's office. So I, I don't want to take a whole bunch of time talking about me or that kind of stuff because I want to get into this, but can I, can I just specifically you two that I haven't met? Your Janet, your council member, anything else you'd like to add? Okay, I can't see your name tag.
Troublemaker.
Troublemaker, three thousand.
Ben Hilliard, we've actually spoke on the phone before.
Okay.
But not in person.
Okay, well fantastic. Was it a good, was that nice on the phone?
Very.
Oh, good. That makes me happy then. Okay, so um, I do have a history here with Woodland Hills. Not a bad history. I just, I've been present when things have happened for a couple of different fires, emergencies and things throughout, throughout my career. So I'm pretty familiar with Woodland Hills. Outside of, you know, you have Deputy Dutton, but when it comes to specifically emergency management stuff, I've also been here to help provide guidance and counsel when needed. Okay, so you're familiar with Emily and the program and, and what you guys are doing with her. But one of the things we're also able to do is provide training and I apologize because my voice is worn out. So when my voice gets worn out, I tend to talk, so probably some nonsense. But um, that's why I have the water. I've got two right there. Thank you. No, because I'm gonna go there. I'm gonna go there. But um, okay, so one of the things we're providing is, is this course, is this training, okay? This training is the G four oh two course. It's specifically, if you look, each of you should have one of these, okay? So this has got the whole slide deck and let me just explain a few things about this training. This is Incident Management System Overview for Senior Officials, Executives, Elected and Appointed. Okay, so senior officials, an overview of what it is, we do, we talk about what you need to know. And there's some basic concepts you need to understand as we go through this. By a show of hands, who is familiar with ICS, Incident Command System? Okay, and that's okay. If you're not, that's fine. There's no problem. I just didn't know, I'm trying to gauge my audience here, so. So this is designed as a four-hour class. We know it's not reasonable to deliver this in four hours. We know it's not reasonable to, to really catch senior and elected appointed officials for that much time. But yet it's, it's important. There's some important concepts in here that we'd like to get across because when, when um, this is where not known by audiences, I was gonna say something, but I don't know you guys too well. When bad stuff hits the fan, right? Okay, when it hits the fan, you want to understand what your role is, right? And specifically, there's a lot of things going to fall on the mayor's shoulders, okay? Because the mayor is the figurehead, the elected official who's elected to represent the community, right? Do we all agree that there, okay? Whether it's good or bad, it is what it is, right? There's, there's perks. There's also some stresses and some responsibilities that come with putting your hat in the ring for office and getting elected. He hasn't found them yet, right?
I got a rice bowl.
Yeah.
That's not bad.
Yeah, so um, this is, this, so this, one of the important things is your understanding of what is expected of me or extracells. What is expected of me in an emergency? What am I expected to do? How am I expected to behave? And what can I expect to happen? How do we all work together? That's kind of what this little overview course is designed to be. We're not gonna hit every slide. I'll tell you that right now. There's gonna be some sections we're gonna glance over. There's, there's no, um, this course is delivered differently every single time. It just is. It's gonna be based upon questions you guys have. Hopefully you guys ask your questions as you, as you have them. I'll do my best to answer them and we can satisfy those questions and move forward and get you all edumacated. So uh, I'm, I'm gonna sit down there. And this is gonna become really weird to me because I don't normally sit down and do that. Normally I'm a stander, walker around or kind of a person. But we'll, we'll do it. And we're gonna go through this, but if there's a slide that I skip or a section that I skip, you have questions on and you want to ask them, please feel free to do so. I will tell you that this is, sometimes it can be tough material just because it's a lot of theory, right? And what's really fun is actually doing this stuff in real life because this does apply to how you behave and respond in real life. So any of you who've been in the fire service, who have been on real emergencies, we've done some of these things and it, I think it's fun. Maybe I'm sick and twisted, not kind of right in the head, but, but um, so I just want to get that across. And we'll go through this, but please, please stop me, ask me questions, we'll get through it. And all, what we've done here is, this is customized to us delivering this course. There's only a couple certified instructors in this course, the state. And I think there's like three, four of us. And uh, I, we were gonna deliver so many times, I just said, guys, I'm delivering this course. They said, okay. I'm a certified ICS instructor for the state. So um, we're gonna get through it. But what I'm going to do is inject stuff for Utah County. Some things we've, we've been, where we've, we've actually been down that road, we've done certain things. So I want to take general examples out and insert local examples because that's when you guys can say, oh, that's right. I was, I was involved in that. I remember that happening. This, okay, it makes it a little bit more sense now. So if I can do that with local examples, it's, it's just a better delivery. So anyway, so we're gonna. But then I can't see what's on the screen. I'm gonna have to keep doing this. Let me try this. Let me try this. No, no, let me try this. Let's, let's try this. It's okay. Okay, so overview. We went through that. Okay, better or worse, probably the same. So um, we, we've met before. I was, I was in here before and we talked and, and so I, I'm obviously with council members, well, I know what most of the people here behind me do. When it comes to the cities, we're doing this for the first time, I like to gauge kind of who we have. Sometimes they have public works and, and, well, I know Corbin's in the back. I'm just saying, sometimes they have public works but not attorney's office or something like that. And sometimes they have attorneys and not public works. And so I, I like to try to keep that in mind as well. Uh, yeah, we've worked together in the past, so. Ted Lee? Ted Lee? We went up in helicopter together and stuff, yeah. Okay, well, so almost officials, that you said? Okay. We'll see how he does on this course, right? You better have all the que, the answers to all the questions, right? Okay. Is there a way I can collapse this? Hide thumbnail video, yes. Okay. So when we're talking, talking about, I'll just have to look up there because this got all the viewer stuff going. Okay, this is stuff we're gonna talk about. Unit two, unit one's kind of the hello, welcome, who are you, what do you do? What time do you wake up in the morning? What do you like to eat for breakfast? That kind of stuff. Unit two is gonna talk about the National Incident Management System. Unit three, NIMS, Management Characteristics. Organizational Structure of the Incident Command System. The role of the command and general staff. Let me do something really quick. Would you go out, please, sort through the mess in the back of my truck? I think you have a big sheet, the big poster thing I have? Just grab that stuff. And I think we have an IAP out there as well. Okay, then we're gonna talk about the attributes and purpose of emergency operations centers. And we're gonna talk about the interconnectivity between the MAC group, EOCs, Joint Information System and Incident Command. I'm gonna tell you right now, we're probably gonna gloss over some of the stuff in unit five really rapidly because I'm just gonna keep this real. You're, you're a smaller jurisdiction that probably won't be involved in larger multi-agency commands and expanding incidents, you're gonna, but I want you to focus on the stuff you will be more involved with, if that makes sense. So we'll talk about it, but I'm gonna kind of skim over it pretty quickly. So and, and by the end of this, you might say, no, everyone keep your questions to yourself because we want to be done. It is what it is. So uh, and then we're gonna talk about the senior officials' role in the preparedness and aspects of this, okay? So exciting. All right, so um, like I said, normally we put this together, this book, Emily herself printed it, did all the binding for it because I thought it was valuable for you guys to have something to refer back to. When we're done, you can go through and say, oh yeah, that's right, it talks about this, or I don't really remember this. And uh, you know, a year from now, you might think that we talked about something and you can go back and you can refresh your memory. Um, and there's also some hand, there's some printed materials in the back. There's some checklists of things we're gonna talk about. Uh, there's a sample delegation of authority letter. I think there might even be a declaration if not. Oh, perfect, thank you. And so there's some checklist, it's in the back. And so we, we just, so like I said, Emily did this all herself and put all this together in a book for you. There's an ICS readiness checklist. And just so you have some things to refer to. So I thought it was valuable and so we've been doing this. This is our, our, kind of our personal attempt at delivering this course in a little bit better way for you guys to read, remember and stuff in the future, okay? Okay, can somebody, oh, I gotta lose silence. Someone tell me what NIMS is. Those of you who are, are familiar, please do not raise your hand or I'll punch you in the throat. Okay, so uh, who, who can tell me what, that doesn't know? What is NIMS? You guys, let me know, or that I think doesn't know. What was the first thing? Cause, yep, that's the first, that's the middle two. System, yeah, you heard you say that?
National.
National, right. So collectively, you guys get a metaphorical gold star. So National Incident Management System. And what does it do? You guys know what it's for? General purpose?
Provide the process and structures for meeting these mandates. Apparently there's some federal mandates.
Is he reading the book? Am I allowed to call people like turds and stuff in here? Am I allowed? No?
I work at a law school. You have to read books.
Okay. All right, that's a great answer. So, yes. National Incident Management System, okay. Really quick, I'm gonna back up a slide without referring to books. Now, who can tell me what an incident is? Okay, this is for anybody. Who can, what's an incident?
Blood, fire, anything.
Okay.
Tornado.
Those are, those are incidents, but who can tell me what an incident actually, not a type of an incident, but what, what is the definition of an incident? In our, we're using it here. You can answer, Kerry. Okay, these are, these are not bad answers. I just want, this is thought provoking. That's all I'm doing, Ted. You're making funny signs behind my back. I'm providing thought provoking statements here. So um, no, we're okay. Okay, here's, here's our definition. This is what we're looking at. It is an occurrence caused by either human or natural phenomena that requires response actions to prevent minimized loss of life or damage to property and/or the environment. So it's something that happens that we have to respond to and we need to protect life and property. Basically, and. There's a couple of key phrases and words and things that you're gonna want to make sure I get in there, but. That's basically what it is, all right? There's um, this is the attorneys, for the attorneys in the room too. There's a legal basis for what we do and why. So Homeland Security Presidential Directive Five talks about the management of domestic incidents. And the Presidential Policy Directive Eight talks about national preparedness and there's mandates. Each of those books you see up there are super thick and you could, you could, you're welcome to go find those. You can probably find them online and get the PDF and download it and read all about it to your heart's content. And I have more power to you if you can stay awake doing it. But that's the legal basis of why it is we talk about this kind of stuff, okay? The biggest thing to take away from is there are policies in place federally that dictates why we do the certain things we do. Okay, and, and this is kind of the backbone behind that.
And just as a reference, this was all established after nine eleven when they realized all the stuff that wasn't coordinated. Presidential Directive for Homeland Security, just to try and get, so relatively somewhat new, I mean, twenty years.
Emergency management in general is relatively new field. But we are constantly making changes and doing things to better prepare ourselves and our communities. So NRF, does anybody know what that stands for? National Response Framework. Response Framework. Wonderful. Yes, okay, it's all about partnerships. Partnerships are important. That's what we're getting from this. And hopefully some of you know this, but if not, we're learning it tonight. Emergencies start local and they end local, okay? Which means, in generally, generally speaking, you have stewardship over your community. Okay, you have stewardship over Woodland Hills. If something happens in Woodland Hills, you take care of it, right? You have, hopefully you guys understand there's a sense of responsibility. You have to do, take care of emergencies in your city because that's what you do. That's, you're the first step. And actually, you know, individuals, households play a, a role in that in the sense of preparedness and those types of things. But as far as emergencies and you actually have an incident, it starts local. So it starts a local government and then it goes and, and you have city and in local government, you have the city, you have the county. And then from the county, it goes to the state and then it goes, it can go federal. Now, there's certain requirements that have to be met to bump that up each of those levels. And we'll talk about some of those. Okay, um, so the important thing is, NIMS provides a template. A general, this is what we think you should do. This is how you should generally behave. Kind of like this comprehensive emergency management plan that we did as the county and the things that you guys are working on as a city. How, how do we generally behave in an emergency situation, okay? And, and NIMS provides that nationwide template. The reason why it's important is because it allows everyone, all the, under the WHO, it allows all those people to work together if needed. You call in people, you get people in some of these national incident management teams and they can come in, they understand how things are operated, how things are, how things work. And what you're supposed to be doing. And so we're trained and we have a nationwide template. You can do that with people. We do the same thing with bomb squads in the state of Utah. We're all trained on the same equipment, same procedures. And so any one of us can go to another bomb squad and fill in for them if, if needed. Same thing applies here. So how, how is that done? Well, it allows you to do it if, under the how. We talk about regardless, things that regardless of the size, location and complexity. So size, you can have an incident where, let's say Deputy Dutton here is driving down the road. He sees something happening that's a traffic incident. Initiates lights, pulls him over, ends up writing a citation, whatever it is, or it could be a domestic violence call. Whatever the situation is, he's gonna behave in the same way by himself as some of these national teams do when they bring in a hundred people, okay? The difference is, he does them very quickly and he does all the roles and responsibilities himself. And we'll get to this, but he's the incident commander. He's in charge of logistics, operations, everything, does it himself, okay? Uh, why? What's the purpose behind all this? Because it reduces the, the loss of life and property and harm to the environment. If we have something that's standardized, we can better, be better prepared to deal with these things quicker, more efficiently. And, and in turn reduces the, the potential for loss of life and property and harm to the environment. Okay, there's some components of NIMS. And we're talking about command and coordination. There's a couple of, there's four different kind of pillars there. There's the Incident Command System, Emergency Operations Center, Multi-Agency Coordination Groups and Joint Information Systems. They're all important. And I'll, we'll give you some examples of how they're important as, as we go. I don't want to take too much time now to hit on each of these, okay? Okay, what is command? The act of directing, ordering or controlling by virtue of explicit statutory, regulatory or delegated authority. Here's the question. Who has the explicit authority for a management of all incident operations in your city? I want someone to give me the answer. The mayor.
Mayor.
Okay, so this is, this is one of those, uh-oh. So I see someone, it says someone was talking, but we didn't hear anybody. So I don't know if they're trying to make comments online.
I, I, I was trying to answer that the mayor, but you got it.
Well, you, you had a correct answer. Thank you. So the mayor is. Now, this question commonly comes up. Well, does that mean the mayor can drive down the road, pull somebody over and issue them a citation for something? If they're responsible for everything in the city, does that mean the mayor has the authority to do that?
I'm willing to try.
That's probably the best answer I've heard. Okay, what's, what's the, what's the answer? No, why? Well, because he's not trained to do that, right? He's not, there's other certifications in place. Peace Officer Standards and Training, you know, post that gives you law enforcement authority. But do you still have a responsibility to do that? You do have a responsibility to make sure you have somebody that does that, okay? In this case, you contract with the sheriff's office to provide law enforcement services to cover that law enforcement basis. You have fire people that you, it's your responsibility to make sure you have fire people or that you contract with a fire department to provide fire services, correct? Okay, and you're responsible for making sure these things get done. Doesn't mean you have to do it yourself. Okay, but let me ask you this question. You have a big incident, right? Can the mayor show up and say, I'm taking command of this incident? Okay, kind of a double edged sword. I mean, weird question because you don't, I haven't told you what kind of an incident it is, so that does matter. But generally speaking, can the mayor, in this case, if he wants to?
Can he show up to an, into an?
An incident, it's not one of those specialty incidents like a fire or law enforcement incident and say, I'm taking command. Can, yeah, yeah, yeah. Under certain circumstances, yes, very, it's very possible. Do you think the mayor should always do that?
Well, when we have the fires, I mean, I remember Craig was already on site. The mayor was traveling down to Salt Lake. She got here and then together they made the decision to evacuate the city. And that was a decision that only the mayor could make.
Sure. That's unique in evacuation.
You're right.
That, that, um, but I guess the point I'm getting at, just because the mayor can, does that mean the mayor should? Just because the mayor can?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
You think about if we have a big watering break, the mayor may be there, but he couldn't save garbage. He'd go down that pole, fix it, right? So he wouldn't.
So, so what this, what I'm getting at is reinforcing the, the idea of, yes, the, the kind of the, the most most senior official could do that, okay? But it's good practice and what we generally do this already, so this is nothing new. I would think the mayor, and I'm speaking for the mayor here, correct me if I'm wrong, would want to find the most suitable person for the job. Is that a safe assumption?
Yep.
Okay, so that, and so by training people to, to be in command, therefore the mayor can spend his time doing mayor things. Okay, city council members can spend their time doing city council member things. And you leave the command things to the command people doing that because it's who, you want the best person suited for the job. Okay, that's kind of what I'm getting at, general concept, okay? But that question was, it was the authority mayor that's responsible for each incident, okay? Okay, we talk about coordination. When it comes to multi-agency, it talks about the multi-agency coordination, the process that allows all levels of government and disciplines to work together more efficiently and effectively. Cops and firefighters, cats and dogs, right?
Right.
We tease, we tease. Yeah, see, see? So we, we, we tease each other, but it allows us all to work together. It really does. It allows public works and this is the thing that I use a lot. I work, I work more with my public works department than I do with our fire law. So it allows all of us to work together effectively, efficiently. You want the best service you can provide for your community and you do that by coordinating our efforts. Safe to say? Makes sense, okay? Um, okay, you have multi-agency coordination groups. This is where multi-agency coordination groups act as a political.
I'm sorry, policy level body.
So there are times, and we'll get into this more, there's times where you have mayor, city council. It, it's really hard. In two thousand twelve, we had an incident, some fires in the county, I won't say where. But the city council and the mayor really wanted to make sure everything was done right. So they thought it was their role to be in command, in the command center, make operational, tactical decisions. And be a PR person to take the governor around and do all these different things. And it's, it's just not as effective. There's a plate, time and a place for, for your policy groups. During COVID, we had our commission and, and let's see. Mayor, I don't think you were the mayor. Were you a mayor at all during any of the COVID stuff?
Well, I guess it depends on how you define it. I mean, but.
Don't get COVID in next month? This year?
Right.
Yeah, July.
It's still holding out strong.
Yeah, in, in the beginning, we did a lot of coordination and I coordinated some calls. We had all the commission and we had all the mayors from all the cities on the call.
Right, now I, it was Wendy, pray that was there at the real.
So, uh, that's a larger incident, so things grow in complexity. But you take the same thing and it's scalable. So there's a lot of times when something's going on at a city level where you're gonna want a policy level body. Because you might have some things come up, you want to make some policy decisions, okay? And you'll want to make sure you support this. So by looking at MAC groups, you can all also think of yourselves as the policy group. And the city council, your, your attorneys, your, and, and you guys obviously contract for attorney services, right? But so there are, so there's some pros and cons to that. So there are some situations where even if the attorney's not there, you might want to reach out to the attorney to, to. To get a, to weigh in on some things, okay? Um so that's important, so but to get the city council members, the mayor, um law enforcement, fire and some. And so other people in a, in a group to make policy level. Uh this is important to support resource prioritize prioritization and allocation. Now, multi-agencies, what we're talking about, multi-agency command groups. So outside of something very local to the city here, when it gets bigger, you have your multi-agency groups, okay? When, yeah.
Well, I was just gonna kind of back up just a hair uh on that last part is policy level body because. In an emergency, depending on if it's just something that is just normal emergency or part of the declaration of emergency. Um there's certain statute that comes into play, um like emergency procurement, emergency. Other things, funding, et cetera, that that's why an attorney who is familiar with. City or uh and state ordinance and statute would know what you can and can't do. You can't just throw it around saying, I think we'll do this now it's an emergency, you should ask.
Definitely, and this is where getting people who know what they're doing um is very valuable. Um for those types of reasons. Also, um you wanna make decisions based on. Uh you know, your cooperative, multi-agency decisions, things that affect everybody, you know, if you have an incident going that's. In a county area, but yet involving your fire resources, commit to your fire department contracts with the county. To to cover certain areas and you have law enforcement up there, you have all these different entities working together, you go for a service. It gets all those, the people who have some stewardship there together. And making those cooperative decisions together, okay? Um and then obviously, decision making among elected and appointed officials. Involved in the incident, okay? But like I said, multi-agency coordination groups, uh it goes more into detail that we're gonna skip over some. But the concept of being able to do this, and as it grows, getting people involved that represent different jurisdictions. You have different stewardship, we all get together to kind of make the best decision for the collective group is an important decision to, I mean, an important concept. That we wanted to go over. Okay, uh emergency operations centers, so. EOCs, which are emergency operations centers, physical or virtual locations where we get together and we talk about stuff, okay, that's what that says. It just says it differently. Okay, um for your EOC, sure. And so a physical location at the church, could it be online, we have some people online with us, could that, could that um. Mean that's how we have an emergency operations center, if we had to, yes, you could do that. Um COVID, one thing COVID did, it really highlighted um our ability to work remotely in some situations. And and in some situations be very effective, but we also saw a downside to that as well. So it's, it's, but the important aspect is it can be physical or virtual location, okay? We have our big command center that we have at uh for Utah County, it can be in there, that's our backup or alternate EOC sometimes. It's, but it was, but the collective, the goal is you gather, whether physically or digitally. Um and you provide support, okay, for that incident. Yep.
Yo, from the city standpoint, who's the most likely person to be in that center?
Cause that's gonna be, that's gonna depend on your plan, okay, you're gonna dictate, you guys are working on with Emily, you're gonna work on your. Uh emergency operations plan or a CEM, comprehensive emergency management plan. You can, you can generally spell out who should be in that, in that emergency operations center. But what you'll see here is this national incident management system is providing you a general set of concepts. It's flexible, it is malleable to every single incident, okay? So no two incidents are ever gonna be the same, you're gonna have to do some different things on each one of them, different factors to consider. So all of these things, but your plan can generally, uh it should, in my opinion, generally dictate. What types of people you should have in emergency operations, okay? All right, so also talking about joint information system, and these are the activities. If you remember, um okay, and I'm gonna give you my point of view on this, you guys may have a different point of view, that's okay. When we had the eighteen Bald Mountain Pole Creek fires, if you remember that chaos that we were dealing with for those two weeks. We had, what, sixteen thousand people evacuated, we had a lot of moving parts, every single city. Um let me ask this question, uh who, is there your PIO here? Okay, as a PIO, okay, take any emergency management role out of this, just as a PIO. Something important like that that was going on with evacuations and stuff, did you feel a sense of stewardship? To communicate with your uh citizens?
Well, definitely.
Definitely.
Right away.
Okay, what I'm getting at is that's a noble pursuit, okay? The desire to communicate with your people, that is important, you should do that. Are ti- is, are there times when that's bad, and I'm gonna highlight why it was, um or or how it could be bad in my opinion. So you have, how many cities were we dealing with when we had those evacuations? Several, I don't need the exact number, we had several cities, several cities that had people that were evacuated, okay? Do each one of them have their own sense of responsibility to communicate with their citizens? Equally, just like Woodland Hills did, yes, okay? So when we get information, we have a desire to share that, we wanna tell our people as fast as possible. Well, make sure they know when they have to leave, when they can go back home, when they can do certain things. In this particular case, it provides, I mean, proved to be a massive challenge. Because if if you're involved, you'll remember that we had so many moving parts, we had two type one incident management teams. Coordinating different information, different um trigger points for different things, some communities were different in certain ways. And we came up with some um situations where we needed to convey something to the public. And we talked about that, well, if some PIO runs out and announces something. You have every right to announce to your community, before we're ready for that to go out, can it cause a problem?
Well, I mean, that was kind of when we were allowed back in the city.
It's exactly what I'm getting at.
That, that was, well, I mean, we had all, we had all kinds of things that were a little messy. The good thing was that at least Elk Ridge and Woodland Hills coordinated to do it in a joint meeting. So that was good thing.
Was it fair to assume that it came with its own set of challenges?
Oh yeah, like Woodland Hills needed to have stickers on all of our cars.
Yeah. Yeah, it my, the point I'm getting at, the point I'm getting at is. You have some logistics that have to take place, and you need to put some things in place before you do some things, okay? We needed to get law enforcement to particular areas to make sure we coordinate this, and so my, the whole point is. Timing is a critical aspect of that, and it got to a point where some communities are putting information out there before we were ready. And it caused problems for us, and so what did we do? Kind of, we kind of locked down our information. If you're.
Fabulous.
If if you remember, we brought in the state's command vehicle, they call it the tank, and that was our, that was our JIC, our joint information center. And we had PIOs from all the communities involved that were there, and we had Spencer Cannon from the sheriff's office. Kind of coordinating that communication, and what he was doing and what we were making sure was done is. We we we, we we had, if we had something we needed to get out, we talked about the timing of it. Things that we had to put in place and make sure the the same information went out at the right time to all the communities, okay?
Well, I'm just telling you, so we had a phone call every morning, first thing before any, any of the other meetings that were at the fairgrounds. We were given kind of the information, this is what's gonna be said, but don't put it out yet, but we'll let, we'll figure this out, so then we'd have our big meeting. That the mayor and I would go to, and then, and then we would get actual um things sent to us like. Um talking points or pictures or anything that was important. So we all have the exact same information to send out at the same time, and then we had the in-person meetings at the fairground, so. A lot of meetings every single day just about communication, and it was, it was great. I mean, in terms of once there was that coordination in place and recognizing, I think.
Well, the one I'm gathering from him is it wasn't great.
That, that's what I was just saying, let me modify the statement, it became better over time.
Yeah, it, well, that's right, at the beginning it wasn't, that's why I kind of did the caveat, once it was in place.
Well, but he's even saying that at the end, it wasn't great.
Well, no, 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 uh what I'm saying is, we learned throughout that process. And we, and we made, we've made steps to make it better because some things happened during the course of it that we realized, oh, this is bad.
So this actually leads me to kind of a question.
Yeah.
I realize that you, you know, jurisdictions are important and so forth, but going back to the Pole Creek fires. That was multiple jurisdiction, and then you had the county, and you had the state, and you had the federal. So, you know, it it came. So the trickle down effect of information means you're going to have leaks, you're going to have misinformation, I mean, the. Standard telephone problem, right?
Yeah.
So at what point does a. Do we like say, hey cities, please stay out of it, we're now going to do all communications out at county level. Or we're gonna do all camp communications out at the state level?
Mm-hmm.
How does that elevator work between?
So, um it's a very good question, and it, we're gonna talk a little bit about that, but. To answer your question is, county really gets involved when it's multi-jurisdictional. You have to prioritize resources amongst jurisdictions. And understanding how the process works for emergencies and and uh declarations and the process to get information up. So the very first level where you can actually, okay, when you're talking about. Monies from FEMA, okay, let me, especially with some new house bills, uh Senate bills, Senate bill. Uh that have, the that have gone through, when you're talking about FEMA. And making sure you qualify for certain funding that's available, the very first level where you can declare a disaster is at the county level, okay?
Lots of cities don't have that, well.
Well, so, but you have to understand why, i- it's not just because you you're not, don't have the authority or anything, but. There's a threshold established at the county level, so Utah County has a threshold of about two point nine million dollars. So we have to meet that threshold to declare a disaster, uh and we can, it either damages or a certain number of threat and health. But generally speaking, we have to meet that threshold, okay? And then the state has a threshold of about five, five and a half, five point seven million dollars, the state needs to meet that threshold. And then we can send on for a presidential declaration to FEMA, okay? And so you have to work up that chain of command, so to speak. Um if, if a city has some problems going on, incident, says. We'd like to declare a federal disaster, and we want the military to show up, and we want President Biden to send us all these troops and support. It just doesn't work like that, okay? Um so we, there's a progression we have to go through. So if for a local incident, the local progression is, you're gonna handle what you can locally. Once it gets bigger than the city, now you get other cities involved as a multi-coordination group. And the county can come in and say, hey, let us help manage this incident, let us help run it, because we have some. Statutory responsibilities at county to to send those declarations up. And and provide support to the local jurisdictions when we can, okay?
The reason why I think that's, I mean, you described it in terms of um allocate, financial allocations. I look at it slightly differently, but similar.
I I, I know we're getting up, but continue your question, okay?
I mean, we don't have full-time resources outside of, you know, a few people.
Mm-hmm.
So the county, you you do have the mobile command center, you have.
We have stuff.
You have, you have toys, that whole barn.
I was gonna say stuff, toys, okay.
I mean, the, the wave runners, I wanna go ride them. So anyway, you have equipment, you have things that cities wouldn't have, and honestly, I don't think from a. Resource perspective, we want to have that at the city level, like that would just be a waste of city money, because mostly he's sitting all the time. But anyway, I, I view it kind of that way.
And and there's another aspect to that, who's jurisdiction, okay, there's that aspect of it. Who has the authority to do stuff at that level, um here's a, here's another, here's an example, um. The sheriff of Utah County is an elected official, okay? Um could the sheriff, yeah, please understand why I'm bringing this up? And it's a sensitive topic, but could the sher-? Okay, hold on, hold on, let me, it's a bad example because you court, you contract with sheriff's office. Can the sheriff go into Provo City and say, Provo Police Department, I don't like the way you're running things. I'm taking over for law enforcement.
Only in in.
He can do that, he absolutely can do that, the sheriff can do that.
State law.
However, should he? No, it's very bad political move, and it's only happened, I I don't even. I can't even give you an example where it's happened, okay? But um because the city has, it, yeah, it it may have happened once or twice in our country. But the sheriff would, I can tell, our sheriff wouldn't do that, I mean, it would have to be the most gravest of circumstances. And I can't even speak for the sheriff on when he would even consider something like that, um.
Well, so there's the examples of Detroit where the state came and took over the city because it was being mismanaged so bad. So I mean, there, there are cases.
There are.
Where that does happen, but it's, I I wouldn't think the sheriff could do that, probably, but that's interesting.
It's in Utah County.
It's, it's state law for all companies, but the sheriff has the ability to step in and and restore order or whatever, whatever it's called, I can't remember.
I I I purposely brought up a very sensitive topic to to emphasize the point, I'm not saying Sheriff Smith would do that. Okay, and I'm not speaking for him saying.
Or the Provo need.
Or Provo need, exactly, well, I'm not saying Provo might ever need that, I'm just saying, could that happen? Yes, it could theoretically happen, um but when, when we're talking about emergencies. The other responsibility at county, the counties have is to triage resources amongst the cities. Okay, that's really one of our responsibilities, and so you have Woodland Hills that's asking for widget X. Provo City asking for widget X, you know, Elk Ridge, uh Payson, all asking for the same widget, who gets it? Okay, and there's so many factors that go into that, but the point is, that's one of our responsibilities, the county to prioritize some of those resources. So there's, 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 there's reasons we fit in where we do under this national incident management system. Um and then, uh like I said, counties have certain uh responsibility when it comes to uh declaring disasters and emergencies. And pushing that up the chain, talking about eligible for certain funding. So I I I I really wanna answer your questions, I want you guys to understand, but please understand. We could go days and days on this material on certain topics. And this is just designed as a, as a broad stroke overview, okay, because we're not making very good time in this presentation. I mean, we're getting good information across to you, we're just, I mean, slide seventeen of sixty-two, people, come on. So, but but if that's okay, that's okay, like, because there's nothing that says if we don't get to the end of the slides that we don't. The information will still be transferred and imparted to you, and you'll be super wise and grand poobas at that point. Okay, did that fall out?
Yeah.
Dang, okay. Um, all right, so what I wanted to get across with the joint information system is the concept of it's important for us to coordinate together, okay? Interagency messaging, um develop the the plans, advise. Your incident commander and your EOC director on public affairs issues, control rumors, all these things. I used a very real world example here locally to drive home a point, and hopefully you guys can understand. The concept that we're trying to get across is it's important for us to communicate together, work together and coordinate our messaging, okay? Okay, um. Again, incident command system, the standardized approach to on-scene command, control and coordination. Providing a common structure where personnel from different organizations work together, we talked a little bit about that. And a structure for incident management that integrates and coordinates procedures, personnel, equipment, facilities and communications, I'll give you an example. Uh in, uh was it eighteen? I'm trying to remember, seventeen. Do you guys remember the incident on the Provo River where that little girl drowned? And that Good Samaritan drowned by jumping in the river trying to save her, and her mother drowned, and it was a bad incident. It was the raging river. It was the raging river, the little five year old fell in there and ended up losing her life. And we found the adult bodies, but the child was missing for two days. You guys remember that incident, okay? So we all responded, but it was important for us to come up with a um to im- to implement certain things. An incident command structure for our second operational period. First operational period, emergencies called out, everyone runs, you had like a hundred different law enforcement officers. You had you had agencies out the wazoo offering support and we had them there, it was a chaos. Now, it was rightfully so, we were trying to find this little girl who may or may not still be alive. But once we realized that we're probably most likely dealing with a recovery at that point and not a rescue. We had to ch- kind of transition and change gears and come up with a plan, come up with an incident command system for our second operational period. This is what we came up with, okay? And this was our ICS structure for our second operational period. And this, what it does is exactly what it's talking about, a standardized approach. Their personnel from different organizations, you had Utah County, you had Wasatch County Search and Rescue, Utah County Search and Rescue, Norfolk. We had um lifelikes, we had Department of Public Safety, Central Utah Water Conservancy. Provo Water Users Association, Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, Metropolitan Water Conservancy. We had our dispatch systems, we had medical out the wa- we had so many different entities coming together. Falling under one incident command system, okay? This is how we were able to organize the chaos and had come up with an approach to handle this for the second operational period. And i- in in a in a nutshell, in essence, this is kind of what the incident command system is trying to do. Provide guidance, you can all get together in an emergency or in a in a in on an incident and work together. Is is so you can accomplish the goal, yes.
Basically, like in our plan, we'll have kind of a basic setup of our system. But it's it will change depending on what the incident is, how many people are needed, how extensive it is. So it has to be very fluid, even though you have kind of a a s- a structure in place, it doesn't stay, if that's not in.
So I I'm gonna show you, you're gonna see a slide where this exact system. Is in place with like four people, okay, so it's scalable, okay? Um, all right, we're gonna talk about an overview of the senior officials role. This is, this is the hard one for mayors to to look at and be like, holy cow, this is what's all on my shoulders here. But this is what it boils down to, in most jurisdictions, the senior official is responsible for. Ensuring the safety of the citizens and protection of property, ensuring the continuity of government. Activating specific legal authorities, disaster declarations, evacuation, state of emergency, other protective actions. And I'll talk about the the states of emergency in just a second. Delegations of authority for incident command, uh coordination with the PIO to keep the media and public informed. Requesting assistance from state agencies through the EOC, resolving any resource allocation conflicts. Coordinating with other senior officials and whole community partners and participating in the multi- multi-agency coordination group. Kind of a lot, if you think about it, there's some serious awesome responsibilities placed on your shoulders, there just is. So, uh, okay, one thing I wanna get across, cause this is a very important concept. A lot of people struggle with bringing in other people to manage an incident, and I'm gonna give you an example. Uh Bald Mountain Pole Creek again, okay? You had the Forest Service that that brought in people to Minnesota's incidents. If you had a similar incident here in the city, and we're gonna take this particular case as within city boundaries, okay? It was something that you were not equipped to handle and you wanted to bring in an incident management team. Some people, some elected officials struggle. Because it says that's their responsibility to do all that stuff. Well, I'm not gonna give away my authority or my responsibility to somebody else to do that for me. So I have a hard time for this, these people coming in and taking over this incident. I'm not saying that's how you feel, I'm just saying some people feel a general hesitancy. I I just not good with that, not easy with that, but you have to understand. Um, you never give away your authority. You never cease to have the same amount of authority, you do. What you do, what you do do, I said do do, what you do do is you delegate some of that authority. To other people to do certain tasks. So if you're getting an incident management team to come in to deal with a fire. You are giving them the authority basically to put the cold stuff on the hot stuff, right? In Bald Mountain Pole Creek, those incident management teams were given a delegation of authority by the Forest Service to come in and put out the fires. Did those incident management teams have the authority to evacuate people? They didn't, they didn't, cause that was on someone else's shoulders. In their delegation of authority, it never said, I'm giving you the authority to evacuate my people, it never said that, okay? So what, you get the order's out, but what what the point I'm getting across is. You will, there's a delegates, a delegation of authority that's adopted that says, I'm bringing you in to do these certain tasks, okay? At any given time, the mayor can say, thank you for showing up. We appreciate your efforts, it's time for you to leave and we're gonna take control of this, we're gonna take over, we're gonna keep doing the things we do. Totally acceptable, you have every right to do that. The delegation of authority just gives somebody else the authority to come in and do the tasks that you ask them to do. At all times, that incident stays local, the local incident can pull the plug on that team at any given time. The Forest Service could have told those two incident management teams, thank you for being here, go home. Now, there's some financial ramifications of doing that, there's, I I I'm saying you have the authority to do that. But now it brings in the question whether you should or in what circumstances you'd wanna do that. Because if 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 the Forest Service did that, and we were spending a million dollars a day for each of those teams. So two million bucks a day for those two incident management teams. If the mayor, or in that case, the Forest Service said, leave, we're doing it, now they're on the hook for those that those funds. So if it was something inside the city and and you bring in a team to do that. When you ask them to leave, you better be prepared to do it yourself, that's all I'm getting at, okay? There's different different ramifications for different types of incidents, okay? The the point I'm getting is you have the authority all times to ask those people to leave and no longer uh no longer do those tasks for you. So you always have the authority over your your people and your incident, even if you bring in another team, so. Just wanna get that concept across, the delegation of authority is usually coupled with the uh these these con- these uh. Request for assistance, uh when the teams come in, the first thing they'll do is they'll fill they'll they'll fill out and have you sign a delegation of authority. Which allows them to do their job, okay? Any questions on the senior officials role here? Okay, ICS organization and features. And I'm getting, we what we have fifteen minutes left? Dang, I I hope you don't mind, I'm not giving you guys a break, we're just gonna bust through this. Okay. We talked a little bit about this, um. Okay, command and general staff, and there's some things we're just not gonna be able to get to. But ICS, um standardized on scene, all hazards, incident management concept, like we've been talking, they're concepts. And it allows your users to adopt an integrated organizational structure. To match the complexities and demands of the incident. We only activated aspects that we needed for this Provo River incident. There's nothing on here that shows IT people here, because we had nothing IT related in the incident. We had a whole heck of a lot of search and rescue teams under our organization, because that's what the incident needed. So it allows you to scale into complexity, scale your resources according to what's needed, okay? Any questions on that? These are just examples of incidents managed using ICS. What it's basically telling you, telling you is pretty much all your incidents can be managed with this concept. Whether it's search and rescue missions, natural disasters, fires, human made stuff, terrorism incidents, anything like that. Even your dignitary visits, um all that kind of stuff is is planned out and you can manage it with the you're by using ICS.
And one of the things that I was in a recent training and they said um. That almost everything they have, see that bottom one, planned events, parades, demonstrations, whatever. But they have a city event, they just put an ICS together so that it's always practiced. So they just, they just automatically do it and it's in place and so if it's a big parade, or I mean, this was the larger city I was talking to. But if they had a a visit from any dignitary in town or whatever, they just automatically do it as a practice.
So I'm holding up right now. An incident action plan, this was for a mobile vaccination clinic we did in Saratoga Springs. Use ICS principles for every single one of these. Action plan for every single one of these, it became standardized and we love doing these, ask her, she loves doing these plans. What it does, when you have an incident and you're trained, you understand how it works, you have you have your. Emergency management plan in place. What it does, your stress levels just don't rise as fast as if you don't have it. You can see almost the stress levels melting away. Honestly, the bigger incidents, um they can be very stressful. Tend to be sometimes fun, let me give you an example of something here. Um and fire guys are gonna maybe appreciate this a little more because you're more familiar with ICS and these concepts. We we have done something here in Utah County that I don't know anyone else that's done one, um nationwide. Every time I talk to people, they're like, oh, that's just a what if scenario, I'm talking area command, okay? We had two type one incident management teams here at the same time for Bald Mountain and Polk Creek fires. And we did not run an area command, okay, it was not large enough to warrant running the area command. So area command is you have an area command over multiple incident command teams, okay? Whether there's different locations, whatever it is, it's just, it's very rare, because we don't have the resources to do that, okay? These big massive California fires you see, they don't run area command, just they just don't very often, but we did. We did, we ran an area command, I'm gonna show you about this, okay? There's over a hundred people on this, okay, in this incident command structure. Like that Provo River is one I held up, this is the same organization scaled for complexity, okay? The reason we ran an area command, this was the drive through of pre uh what they have, the preliminary voting. For during during COVID, so we had to, we had to, we had four, four, one, two, three, four different locations. We had to do um drive through voting and all the complexities that came with that. And so we have four totally independent incident command system, ICS structures managed by one area commander. And when I show everybody this and they're like, when I tell them, yeah, we've done area command, they go, no, you haven't, that's doesn't happen very often. I promise you, we have, no you haven't, let me show you, they're like, oh, yeah, you guys did that, huh, that's relaxing, really cool. So it worked, we were our county, we won national awards for this, not me. Our elections division won national awards, that's who had to do this, we were the planning arms for all of this. My point is, in bringing this up, is you have the same concepts in. This, okay, is you and this, same concepts. You also have the same concepts in an incident where you have five people doing the same thing, it's just scaled to complexity. So. It was very, it it was, it was, I can tell you, it was very fun for me. They had me being the the area commander, the incident command for the area command. Not because I'm an emergency manager, it was more because I have my background in law enforcement and they chose me for that reason. All we did was provided a plan to our elections people and said, here's your plan, go work it. You have to find an in incident commander for area command and I would have that person choose four independent incident commanders. And this is what you need to go find, go forth and do, here's your plan, and they said, okay, Peter, will you do that? And I said, well, that's not how it normally works, they said, yeah, I know, will you do that, please? So so um anyway, so I got to participate in the planning aspect of it and execution of the operational stuff. It was really a lot of fun, but my point is, stress levels were way down, it was fun at that point. Um because you had a systematic approach at these, with these concepts, generalized concepts. And everything's standardized, we brought in people from other jurisdictions and and it's just all just worked, you know, it just just worked, okay?
So Peter, can I ask a question?
You bet.
So I mean, we've got like community festivals, community events, would that be a good exercise to do it as sort of a dress rehearsal in that context?
It it could be a very good example, there are cities in our county that do one every single time for their city celebrations, there are. Provo, Orem, several cities do that, now what you guys have to weigh out, do you have the resources to do that? Do you have, do you want to, now you can, it's very applicable to do that, very appropriate, very applicable. It can, it could make your stress levels go down, could plan some things out, um but you have to answer the questions whether you should or not, okay?
I'm just meaning more as a dress rehearsal, like not necessarily because it would present. Any real logistical, yeah, just to have having had gone through the exercise when something actually kind of critical.
I I think it could benefit you a great deal if you were to do something like that, but you guys are the ones that make that determination.
Well, like was said to Peter, will you do it?
Well, we we have resources that can help you, we really do.
I I that 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 I think would be something that would be.
Okay. Um, all right. Okay, we talked a lot, okay, this is the ICS organization. Um, one thing that's they're trying to capture here is just because you are um. Okay, let me take, let me take Ted Lee here. Uh, you are an engineer of our trade, right? Okay, so if you are um. Volun- if you're if you go to a a fire call for the city, are you an engineer when you're on the fire, what are you? You're a firefighter, right? So when you're doing these things, your day to day administrative things don't really matter, because at that moment in time, you're a firefighter. And so just, that's what they're trying to get across is if you're, if you have people coming in who is a chief. Uh let's say um you have a fire chief that is stepping in, providing a different service, a different. Um position on this organization chart. In this capacity, and they're not the fire chief, in this capacity, they could be the operations section chief, they could be something else. So just keep that in mind, you're asked to step into a a role and it might not be the one, the role you are on a day to day basis, okay? Um, that's why it says rank may change during deployment, those kinds of things. Okay, some things to understand, to get across, they're important, holy garbage, okay? We wanna make sure we use common terminology, you wanna manage by objectives, Hispanic control is important. All these things are important, but I'm not gonna read them all, just read it, look up there and memorize every single last one of them. And always, always have them ready to go at the moment's notice, no, just, you have your books. But just understand, there's there's foundational characteristics of this uh command and coordination under NIPS. Okay, uh the organization is modular, this is where I said you can scale it up and down depending on your complexity. Um, resource management is important, reimbursements, uh chain of command, unity of command. That's an important concept to understand and chain of command is an orderly line of authority within the ranks of the incident management organization. And unity of command means that every individual has a designated supervisor he or she reports to at the scene of the incident, okay? There's there's different terminology. Um, this is what ICS does, we're gonna talk about this really super quick. Incident commander has overall responsibility for the incident, sets objectives, operations section chief, tactical. Just think of it as tactical, it's how the incident is carried out on the ground, boots on the ground. Planning is in charge of planning stuff, logistics, getting stuff, ordering stuff, making sure you're supported with the stuff you need. Finance admin section, that's keeping track of the money, okay, people get paid, bills get paid, uh you have.
Not usually where the hours also go to. Not usually where the hours also go to in, in an incident because
Tracking.
the, the tracking of the hours because that ends up becoming a financial issue.
That's your admin stuff. Yep, hundred percent. Your incident commander's role, overall leadership, and everything else there. And basically, you're delegating your authority to others. And by the way, this is not bad that we're not getting through everything. We rarely get through all the slides in this course. So here's your senior officials' role.
We're halfway.
Well, we, we are halfway on the slides, but we're not on time.
No, I know.
Yeah. So she's like, oh, I'm very wary of that. Go. Yeah, so, um, so, uh, your policy guidance, activate your legal authorities, oversee resource coordination and support. Delegation of authority is kind of what I talked about. Already with that signed documentation. And this is the summary of your incident management roles. Commanders, information system, EOC director and staff. Basically, your EOC is that place that you coordinate to get stuff done, right? One thing I wanted to make clear though, an EOC, Emergency Operations Center, does not take the place of an incident command on scene. Okay? Different, two different things. Incident command on scene is the operational stuff, how it's carried out, and the Emergency Operations Center supports that incident, supports that incident commander by all the different ways they do. Okay? To make sure they have the tools to get their stuff done. Okay? But that is a commander will report to that Emergency Operations Center and check in and get guidance from your policy groups and stuff like that. And this is what I was talking about when it talks about incident complexity and the ICS structure growing in size by that area. Unified command, this is where you have multiple cities might be getting together. Who's in command? If it, if it's you in upridge, say it's right on the border, okay, incident happened, you were upridge. Well, yeah, exactly. Yes. This is where you have a unified command. So you have equal parties at the table that say, we're gonna talk, and we're gonna work things out, and we're gonna make decisions based on Yeah, I think this is a, this is a pretty reasonable place to stop. I just, but there's a lot of concepts in there. I'm just gonna go through here and just click through. It talks about functions of EOC. But, but this is more, again, Emergency Operations Center could also be tailored, grow in complexity based on activating the, the functions that you needed at that time for that specific incident. You have ICS or ICS-like stuff, you have an incident support model, departmental, what do they do, you know? Okay, so you have an ICS structure, that's, that's what we do. You have, you have ICS structure that, that, that brings into play certain characteristics. When you need to activate them, you will. Okay? Your EOC benefits, you can go through those. I'm just, I'm just really clicking through these things.
And all of this type of detail will be in our plan.
Yeah.
So we will, when we adopt that plan and we go through it, and then we'll at the end, when we have to propagate it, you'll go back to this and say, oh, yeah, I remember that we got the, the NIMS overview and now this is what we're doing for Woodland Hills, but it's based on that. And all of these lines and their
Yeah. So one of the things important to understand is you guys, does, does Woodland Hills receive any federal grant dollars? Okay. Do you realize, and some of you might know this, some of you might not know this, by doing that, you are stating you are NIMS compliant. Are you aware of that? You're telling the federal government that you as a community, you as a city, you are NIMS compliant. You guys know all this stuff. That's what you're telling them. I'm just saying, that's what you sign up, when you sign those things and you get that money, that's what you're telling them, that you know this stuff. So I'm just. Yeah.
Ted knows this stuff. That's, that's what we're attempting.
Well, and, and, and it used to be the county was in charge of monitoring and documenting what cities were NIMS compliant, and we'd have to do a roll-up, which is saying how many people are trained. You know, your NIMS compliance usually comes down to IS 700, IS 800, ICS 100, ICS 200. Those four bases.
All of our wildlife firefighters are all.
Yeah.
Right. Everybody can add in their plan.
But, but what I'm saying, for a city to say we're NIMS compliant doesn't just mean firefighters know that stuff. I mean, certain percentage of all your people know that stuff. Okay? But But, but you still have to be NIMS compliant. So you, by receiving those monies, you are saying you are NIMS compliant.
That's why the state said everybody has to have a plan, even though with the unfunded mandate, it was because of this very incident, they have an emergency manager, have this plan, so that the federal government knew that that was in the works. And our county has kind of stepped it up to help us and which we really appreciate, and hopefully we can help other cities once they show how successful it's been.
Um, okay. Really, I, I've gotten across the important concepts I wanted to. And hopefully you understand that, again, thirty thousandth of you, every one of these areas, you could go to a full day course on and learn more about. This is just, this is just a windshield assessment, kind of what you're supposed to be understanding and doing and.
So, so something that would help me. So, again, I'm now talking to
Yeah.
when we had the possibility of flooding. And they called at the time you were like
I, I was gone the very first day the fires broke out. I was on a separate contract. That company said, oh, you have some important stuff going on at home. We're gonna fly you home. I came in day two. But I was there for the rest of the duration. I was, I was there for all the flooding stuff too.
Okay. So getting back to what we used to, is if we had a really good idea of what the structure is under you, so we know if you're gone, we can call.
Yeah. And you guys have received copies of our comprehensive emergency management plan. It talks about that kind of stuff. Um, but, but, yes, um, we, in emergency management, when these happen, I was a kind of a one-man shop for the county. And through the years, the last several years, and talking about all the incidents we participated in, the county has seen the writing on the wall. We're growing. We're, we're gonna be the largest county in the state. Salt Lake County has like full-time, fifteen full-time emergency management people in their shop. We, at the time, I had one. I participated in a nationwide study with counties my similar size, and we were number one hundred of, out of one hundred on staffing. And all of that went to the commission. They have, so now we have our own bureau. They're building us our own facility. They've added some positions. We're doing this pilot program. The demand for us has stepped up a great deal. And so they're starting to understand. And so they, so I was able to bring on a sergeant in emergency management. So when I'm gone, Quinn Fackrell is his name. He's a good person, but Emily's also a great person because you guys have a relationship with her. You can call Emily, she can get ahold of us. It's just important that, that we, our shop understands what's, understands what's going on. We can get the, the communication out amongst ourselves, but it's important that you have these relationships. Yeah. But, so anyway, that's in the plan. Training and exercising is important and improving all the time is important. And this is just a summary of everything else we talked about. You guys have any other questions? You snuck in.
I just wanna say, you know, thank you for, for coming. And also, again, Emily knows how much we appreciate her and her skill set and, and walking us through our plan to make sure that we are compliant. And so
Fantastic. Absolutely fantastic. And, yeah. Anybody else have anything?
I do. Peter, I'd like, I'd like to just comment. This is Doral.
Hi.
There have been occasions when we've had avalanches and other things in our city, flooding and so on. And, and what we have really appreciated is you willing to come and stand with the incident commander. You stood by Craig many times and helped, helped him with the things you talked about. And that has been very valuable to us. So I'm saying our relationship with you personally has really aided our city many times. And we want you to know that that has huge value to us, knowing you and knowing you'll be there if we need you.
I appreciate that comment. Emergency management is ninety-five percent relationships. That's what it's about. Hopefully, so that's what I strive for. I, I want people to understand that I'm not just getting paid to do a job. I care about this stuff. The time I put in, there's so much time I, I donate, I don't get paid for, but it's important. I, I'm not getting paid tonight to be here. Okay? It's just reality. But do I think it's important? Yes. Important enough to be here? Yes. I'm a time again, I've been in the communities. There was one in two thousand twelve where a city was having a disaster and they just said, Peter, it is, you know, privately said, we really don't know what we're doing. Will you just stick with us, help us? And I spent a week there with them and helped them through that emergency. I honestly believe, and Carrie knows this about me, one of the reasons why we have this pilot program is because I care. Thank you, Siri. I care about us as a county. Yeah, I care about our community as a whole. I might not live in Woodland Hills, but I've been in Woodland Hills. I care about Woodland Hills. I care about, care about every city. And I think the better we are collectively as a whole, the better it serves us, you know, honestly. And so I, Doral, I, I appreciate that comment. I appreciate it a great deal. I try to strive to show people that I, I'm there because I care about the communities and each one of our people hopefully has the same approach.
Well, Craig has showed us several times where when we were having potentially big, heavy rains hitting our mountain, where you came, you were totally involved with him on that and, and on those occasions. And I just hope those somehow can continue. They're just so valuable to have, have your knowledge locally there with us when we needed it.
I, I'm not planning on going anywhere. You know, there was a time where I did plan, but to, to go, to leave, I was going to retire, but they talked me into this. They promoted me instead and I rededicated myself to the, to the county. Cause anyway, I
I didn't put that thing into the state saying they couldn't take him either.
I, I'm not planning on going anywhere. I appreciate that. That's what we strive to do. It means a lot to me that you appreciate, that you recognize that, just because I want you guys to know that I am not, I don't want to be seen as an outsider. I want to be seen as somebody who, even though I am an outsider, that really is gonna help you make decisions. I never want you to question any motives behind what, the, the way I'm counseling you guys, because it's really, it's, it's about what's in your best interest. I, I, anyway, I, thank you for your comments. But, you know, I've been here a long time. I sit at on some state boards, you know, on emergency management. I'm one of the more senior emergency managers in the state, at, at the county EMs. So we have, we have some relationships in place which are really important. But please know you're always welcome to call. Several of you, I don't hide my cell phone number. I'm not one of those types of people. I'll, I'll give it to the Joe Blow on the street. They can call me. I regularly answer calls.
Get his number, Ted. Get his number.
Oh, I already got it from my contacts.
See? Yeah. See? Yeah. So anyway, what I'm getting at, we're here, okay? And now it's not gonna be just me. You're also gonna have some other people here that are just as proficient, that are, are putting in their dues to learn and, and grow and become what, what they, all they, you know, all they can be, not to be cliche, but be all they can be in emergency management. But anyway, thank you guys. That's all, that's all I've got. So.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks for being here.
If you need us in the future, you just know where to, you know how to reach us.
Very good. Thanks for your time. Thanks, Emily. And I, I hope at least you take your food to go. So you may not get paid, but at least you get zow, so.
I get rewarded.
Yeah, there's something.
Yeah.
The same person.
Yeah, no, I was, I was thinking.
Yeah, so.
All right. Thanks again.
We'll get out of here.
Well, you're welcome to stay.
No, no worries.
All right. But I do, at, at the request of certain council members and, and myself included, we'll take just a brief break to yeah, throw your garbage away and let's just reconvene at six forty-five if we can. Welcome back, everyone. Okay, now welcome back, everyone. So this is a departure from what's on the agenda, but Chris Helvey is online and is not available for the entirety of the meeting. So we're gonna jump to item two, the opening of bids and discussion of solid waste and recycling RFP. So Chris, take it away.
Great. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So as you know, we went to an RFP several weeks ago for garbage, and we had one respondent that submitted an RFP and that was waste management. I'll forego all the details because you all have received a copy of their, their proposal and their bid. And I just have the bit up here on the screen, but I just want to jump down to the meat of it right now. That's the pay mayor. And let's just pull up the spreadsheet and talk about costs. And let me pull that up here real quick. Is the spreadsheet up or is still the RFP up?
It's still the RFP.
Okay, hold on, let me stop. I'm gonna share it again. Okay, that should be it now. Is that big enough for everybody? Make it a little bit bigger.
No, that's good.
Okay. So what I did is I took, we, we kind of did it differently last time when we did an RFP and got, basically when we started recycling. And I think at the time, the mayor, the council, or, or somebody wanted to look at reducing the second and third can, garbage cans that residents had and encourage recycling. So we cut the prices down of recycling, but increased the cost of the second and third cans. And we started to get upside down in the revenues versus the, or the expenses over revenues. What I'm proposing here is taking on line one, or excuse me, on line four, you can see that currently in the city, we have two hundred eighty-seven people, families with first cans, two, eight, two hundred eighty-seven households with first cans. Then we have three hundred and seventy-two with second cans, third cans, and we have four households that have four garbage cans. And then we have a hundred and eighty-eight residents with recycled cans. Hundred eighty-six of them are first cans. Two residents have two recycled cans. Currently, we charge the residents for first garbage can thirteen dollars, for the first garbage can twelve dollars for any additional garbage can. And each recycle can, if it's one, two, three, four, twenty, we charge them thirteen dollars per can, per month. We also have to pay dumping fees with the solid waste district, and it averages about four dollars and forty cents per home currently right now. Those numbers fluctuate obviously as we change these numbers up here on line four, but averaging about four dollars and forty cents. Line seven, now we're jumping to the RFP. If we look at the RFP, this is just for garbage pickup. The truck that comes up thumps the stuff and takes it away. They're proposing eleven dollars and thirty-three cents for the first can, four dollars and thirty-five cents for each can thereafter for garbage. But they're raising the recycle cans to sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents for recycle can. If we look at line eight here, line eight is taking into consideration the four dollars and thirty-seven cents that we paid to the special service district, plus the new rates that waste management's gonna charge us. That comes out to be just a break-even point of fifteen dollars and seventy cents for the first can, eight seventy-two for every garbage can thereafter, or nearly twenty-one dollars for recycling. If we, and if we throw an inflationary number in there and/or money so the city can recoup some costs, it costs us to bill out paper and employ and employee time, I just threw a twelve percent number in there. There's nothing magical about that, that, that number is just thrown in there. So to propose new water rates, excuse me, new trash rates, I'd recommend going to about eighteen dollars for the first can, nine, no, ten dollars for the second can, and twenty-four dollars for recycling. Then, one thing I did is I looked at your text, and I tried to extrapolate kind of the, the dollar amounts you put in there, and you put something like nine, or six hundred and some odd dollars. I, I was wondering if that was for the rooftop fees that we're getting, or if that was something else.
Let me pull that back up here.
It was a, yeah.
Yeah, so basically, I believe this was a yearly, so it was an additional fee of six hundred and sixty with an increase of recycling to two thousand seven hundred and fifty. So basically, on the transfer station side of things, back in the beginning of last year, so January twenty twenty-one, the transfer station was paying right around eighteen dollars a ton to the waste management recycling facility. Now, currently, they are paying over a hundred dollars per ton in recycling fees, and the reason for that is the fact that certain resources are cheaper and raw materials currently than recycling, so there's no market for them. So that's why the, the, the price jump. And so that is where these increases per my text to you, Chris, have come from, mostly around that recycling increase. And I think that's probably potentially what we're being, what's being reflected here, though actually, that wouldn't actually make sense. The effect of my text, Chris, would be in, in six BCD, in that four point three seven, because that'll be the, the fee increase we will receive directly from the transfer station. It should not be reflected at all within the waste management pricing, right? But that four thirty-seven should increase.
I was, I was not able to kind of extrapolate that twenty-seven hundred and fifty-four recycling as good as I had hoped for, but I did take up the rooftop fees from two hundred and forty-two dollars per month and add to that six hundred there. I don't know if that's where it's supposed to go, but it fits into the formula to incorporate that per month.
I can call Terry Ficklin tomorrow and verify that, and then I'll coordinate back with you so that we can get these exact numbers.
Okay. And then you can see on line twelve, the percent increase or decrease that we would get by providing these rates. So recycling jumps up quite a bit, and actually, so does the first can. Second cans, obviously, second, third, fourth cans obviously drop. And then the other thing is we, there's a newer fee for people to sign up when they first come to the city. Waste management charges twenty-five, and we're not passing that along. We don't have a vehicle to do that. So when we do do the garbage rates, we want to make sure we get that in there, and I would recommend adding ten dollars on top of that, that the city would keep for every new resident that signs up. So this is something that can, we can continue to talk about, or we, what we need to do tonight is the RFP, we still have to accept the RFP and score it. I went ahead and just looked at the RFP, and they hit every single thing on there except one, which was the ninety-day guarantee on the price. We're gonna need to assign this well in advance of ninety days, but otherwise, waste management hit every, everything on the RFP that they were supposed to. So I'd like to have council's permission to go ahead, close the RFP, send a letter to the state that, in all respects, waste management met the RFP to our standards, and we're going to award them the contract pending contract negotiations.
Thanks, Chris. So any questions from the council?
Thank you, Chris.
All right. Perfect. Then we'll move on to the next item. Chris, thanks for making time for us tonight.
You bet. I've still got a couple moments. Is there anything else on this agenda for me?
Well. Yeah. Not, or eight, we're gonna table. So, yeah. If not, I'd say you're free to go.
Okay.
All right. Thanks again.
Much.
Okay, then jumping back to item one, twenty twenty-three municipal election voting options. Jody, are you leading this?
Last year, or two years ago, when we did ranked choice voting, everyone is aware of some problems that we had with it. I've spoken with Josh Daniels, Daniels, who is the former Utah County Recorder. He made some suggestions that if the council chooses to go with ranked choice voting, that we might ask the county to comply with. One of those would be, we would not, we had asked the county not to give any results out the night of voting. By Friday of the week that voting happened, so four days later, he was pretty confident that an accurate picture of the number of votes could be there, but we would have to train our residents that they're not going to get results on voting night. So that's kind of the drawback of it. Your opinions on ranked choice voting? Yes, no? It requires, we don't have a primary if we choose ranked choice voting. So I guess that's a savings of twenty, about twenty-six hundred dollars for the city. I've heard some negative comments from residents, and, and I don't know if any residents are here to want to comment on it, whether they are pro or con on it, for or against, but that's pretty much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Jody while she's?
I do. Uh, I do. Jody, you're the biggest part of our city that has to handle elections. I would be interested in your opinion, and if you were a council member, how would you vote?
It is the hot seat.
Wow.
I, I don't, I'm not there, so I can't get hurt.
Thanks, Doral. I know you're coming back.
Sure to hurt you, man.
I wasn't a big fan of it, but then my experience with having to deal with the county was, it was high stress. I mean, we had residents who were complaining that the election was fixed, that the results changed, that we didn't count everyone's ballots, that we hid ballots, you know, whatever's happening on the national. Yeah.
But would you say your concern primarily was just the revelation of the outcome?
Yeah.
And we're a small city, so it makes a big difference.
Well, we usually have eighty percent of our registered voters.
Yeah.
And when you're only, you're giving results off of twenty percent or thirty percent, it's going to change. A lot of people don't understand, we had two council seats up, and they looked at who won. They thought naturally that second place person on there was going to be the winner, and they didn't understand how everything went back in. Where we have three seats up this year, makes me a little nervous, but that's just me.
I spoke with Josh about that, and I don't know if you're in a, a capacity that you can comment on this, Josh, but we talked about, you know, is there a way that the county could change their GUI or their interface on there to basically show all three seats and currently the tabulation on them, or some other way to show, without knowing how ranked choice voting reports, to be able to show that to, to the layman, right? I don't know, Josh, what do you got there?
Yeah, gr- great question. Yeah, and you know, I apologize, having been the clerk last time, for, for maybe not thinking ahead about this issue, which is that quite common around the country that on election night, the, the seeming winner that night may very well change. This is common, I mean, the twenty twenty election, there were times during election night, people felt like, well, Donald Trump was going to win. Of course, once mail votes got, you know, came in, and once election offices finished the processing and got to ninety, ninety-five, hundred percent of the ballots processed, those results change in close races. And so communicating that to residents is key, helping people understand the nature of the preliminary election night results is important. And to your point about on the user interface, where residents are looking at the results, you know, projecting that this is preliminary, projecting that this is an initial tally, having information about the percentage of, of votes that have been submitted, but that have been processed versus not processed, that's all very important. Yeah, I would say, once eighty five percent or more of the ballots have been processed, those results are a lot more confident as, as being predictive of the final outcome in a close race. That still wouldn't be the case, but you know, we have an issue in, in Utah where voters care a lot. They'll wait to the last minute to drop off their ballot. Maybe they're undecided until the last minute, and so those ballots often don't get processed on the election day, but maybe the next day or the day after. And so, so as it was mentioned earlier, typically by Friday of the week of the election, those results are well above eighty-five percent processed, and there's a lot more confidence in that outcome. But yeah, there's different ways, I think, to characterize the results, to, to reflect how they are preliminary in nature, and how that ranked choice process, once all the ballots are counted, could change the, the outcome in, in close races for sure.
Well, and even the bar graph, see, because I actually thought Doral lost when I looked at the results of this last election. And, and so I, I think that there is some, some confusing aspects, and I don't know if that's what your point is too, Ben, is just like even how it's displayed.
Yeah, so it'd be like three bar graphs, right?
Yeah.
Seat one, seat two, seat three. So in, like, our last election, if it reflected the way I talked with Josh about potentially is, it would have Janet as seat one, and then it would pull her out of seat two's bars and then rerun everything, right? So then it would show Janet as one, Doral as two, clearly, even though it was Doral as three on seat one, because a lot of people who voted one for Janet voted two for Doral, right? But those twos aren't reflected in that first seat, right? So that would be the way it would flush out and show a lot more clearly. So in that seat two, it would allocate, you know, Janet's votes over, and thus it would then show correctly. I think it would paint a better picture. I think in our election, Mayor, it was, it was far clearer. The numbers weren't, the results weren't, but there was just the three of us running for one seat.
Right. Yeah, it was with the council that it, I thought was more confusing.
And this one with three seats that are up currently, I think it could be. I think another piece that I'd love to know is, we keep saying that ranked choice voting will be cheaper, but it'll only be cheaper if we need a primary, right? And if we run standard, how many people need to be running for us to run a council with three, or to run a primary with three open seats? Seven? So.
Mind, Josh?
Yep, that's correct. If you have seven candidates who file, that will necessitate a primary. If you have only six, then you will not have a primary.
And you have to work with the county to get the results to where you want them to get them. So it's going to take a lot, a bit more coordination.
I don't think we want to make this decision based on this immediate next election. I think that would be very short-sighted. I think we want to make, the, the last thing I would want to do is flip-flop based upon how many seats, how many positions, what position, you know, that, I think that would confuse residents even worse. So I, I guess I'm throwing away that part of your argument.
Oh, no, my, my point of the argument's just.
Yeah, and, but I don't see the state going that direction. I, I see the state actually going the opposite direction, which is ranked choice voting is the only way you can do voting, eventually. Having said that, let me just point out, I see two distinct advantages. One's already been mentioned. It is cheaper. The other advantage that I like about ranked choice voting is it shortens the election season. So you're not going all the way from June with signs all over the city till November. You, it's basically September, October, and November, which I, you know, again, we're a small city. It's not like we don't know each other, and so I just, I like having the shortened season. Having said those two advantages, I, I went to the all-day meeting on ranked choice voting. It was very interesting. I thought that it was, it was very much one-sided, which I felt was actually a disservice to the meeting, because I think they could have done a better job of presenting, you know, alternative views. But the one comment that I came away with that I thought was the best comment of the entire day is there is no perfect way to elect people. There just isn't. You're going to have arguments over whatever way you do it. And so having said that, then I start saying, well, what is the benefit for plurality? Well, the benefit is, pretty much everybody understands it. They've done it for years. They get it. It's not new. It's, it's pretty easy. What are the downsides to plurality? I think one of the big downsides, and I saw it in some of our election even last time, even though we were doing ranked choice voting, is some people tend to kind of have it be a me versus him kind of a thing.
It's negative.
And, and it, it can go negative super, super quick. And the one thing I, I, anyway, I'm, I'm very much against that kind of, I won't vote for somebody who goes negative. I don't care what their stance is. I just will not vote for that kind of personality, because it's not who I am, it's not who I want my community to be. So I won't vote for him. So I, I don't like that aspect of plurality. I do like the fact that ranked choice voting tends to temper that down a little bit. I actually like the, the graphs for the most part, but I do agree with you that fixing them, tweaking them, I think making them a little bit better would, would be great. But I'll also say this, I, I don't feel like being the guinea pig on this. I, I'd, I'd, I'd rather let the state be the one who drives this and says, we're going to do, we're going to mandate ranked choice voting. I, I just think, let, let other cities be the guinea pig and let them work out the kinks, and then we'll jump on.
I have a question. I mean, we've done it once, so I, I don't know if it would be that we're a guinea pig anymore, but Josh, how many cities around the state are, are currently using ranked choice?
Well, last cycle, about twenty-one cities opted to do it. Some of them didn't end up, you know, needing a primary. So far, there's a ten cities that have opted to do it this year, and of course, other councils are considering it before the end of the month. So, and, and, you know, this is the third year now of this option. The first year, Payson and Vineyard were the first two, and then, you know, the last time around, yourself and some other cities. And then this time around, some, there's some additional cities in Salt Lake County that are doing it that hadn't done it previously. So kind of, kind of a diversity of options there. And, you know, one thing to think about, you made some really good points about the strategy of, of campaigning, and at the recent league conference, many people came up and talked to us about their experience, and some council members, you know, not necessarily from Woodland Hills, but other cities, explained that there's strategies to just vote for one name on a council race if there's two or three seats open, what's called bullet voting. And that's because, you know, if, if somebody votes for three names, one of those other names might end up with more votes than, than your name. And so there's a strategy to encourage voters to maybe just vote for one name, which maybe is a disservice. Ranked choice voting helps eliminate that strategy, because you don't benefit much from that strategy, and so that way voters can really consider all the names and then sort of rank them according to their preferences.
My other thing is, I agree with, with you, Ben, on those graphs. I, if we could work it out with the county to where that reporting is a little more accurate and, and timely in, in showcasing it, I think that would help. That was our biggest frustration. I heard from quite a few residents who actually liked it. They liked the shorter election season, I guess we call it, what David mentioned, but. but they also liked that they didn't feel like they had to pick between friends, that they could just say, oh, well, I like you first, you second, you third, right? They, they liked that aspect of it in that it was a friendly campaign and most, you three did a lot of, and, and Doral too, did a lot of campaigning together, because you knew you weren't needing to go up against each other. And I think the citizens appreciated those joint meetings that weren't debates. They were just there. And so I think that, um, I mean, overall, I, I think that a lot of people, um, were okay with it for that civility aspect. Um, but I agree that we would need to figure out the reporting mechanism to make sure it's accurate. I've talked to quite a few of the cities that did it last time. Payson still loves it, they still endorse it all full on, so does Vineyard. Um, there was a couple of cities in Salt Lake that had a little bit of a rougher time, but they also had like twelve candidates for the same seat, which is weird to me, but, um.
Well, that, that's actually a really good point, and it might be a point for the, the three different seats is, the problem that they had was they had so many candidates for the same seat that it, it divided the population too much.
Right. So Josh, maybe you could ask that que, answer that question, you know, why do we have to decide in the spring when declaration isn't until June? Why don't they allow you to decide after declaration so you would know if you were going to save money or not, or if you even needed it? Is that just a state statute?
Yeah, it, it's kind of an arbitrary point in the state statute that certainly I think could be changed. I mean, it's a good point, maybe give cities longer, you know, to opt into it, uh, so that they'd have kind of those options. It's a, it's a great point. It, I think it's just, that's just what the statute says. I, I don't know there's a necessarily good reason for it.
But if we were to hold a primary, when would we have to hold the primary?
August. Yeah, we'd hold it in August. So we'd have to campaign from June to August, and then whoever comes out of primary.
So it's doable.
Does it from August to November.
Yeah.
And, and if, and if, yeah, so it's a, it's a long, long campaign season. And again, you know, depending on if we need it or not, but we won't know if we need it or not until, till June. So I guess that's the, that's the hangup. I guess we need to, to go forward and see if that can get changed to where we didn't have to decide until, till June.
So we did a, kind of a quick poll at the, um, conference I went to at SUU on cities, because there were a couple of cities like us who haven't passed it yet, on how many of them were not, they thought their councils would not go the way of ranked choice voting. Um, I think it was Leighton said definitely not, uh, we're not doing this again. It was, most of the cities in Utah County, if they've already chosen to go ranked choice voting, they knew it right off the bat. Um, a lot of the other smaller cities, it looked like they weren't going to. I know, I think Goshen has decided not to. Um, and there's a few other ones that have decided not to already.
They do it based on that reporting too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, they're eight, the demographics of their residents, they're a little bit older and they're used to the other way, and they couldn't grasp the one, two, three. So we'd have to probably do a little bit more educating of our population on how we're doing it.
Yeah, maybe that little video that we showed last time was helpful to some people. I know that there were people who reached out to me after we did that and, and thought that it was, it was helpful. I don't know.
And then it's coordinating with the county and seeing if they'll actually agree to, um, honor our requests.
Josh, how do you, I mean, as former clerk, how do you think that would go with the current clerk who, would you think that's a possibility to do an individual ask like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's certainly possible. Um, you know, right now, as it is, the, the visualization tool that you're talking about, that user interface, has actually had some improvements where there are some language that can go on there that says, you know, that a candidate is in the lead instead of they are elected or they've won. And, uh, there is a way to show it to where you can show all three of the different seats and show the bar graph for each seat. So, um, some of those improvements exist now and might help to better display those results.
I, uh, wanted to throw something in here. Um, I contacted the council members of Moab and Heber City, and they were all very positive in deciding to do it, uh, again for this election. Um, that had some credibility to me that, that, although the cities are unlike ours, there are reasons they chose to do it again. Um, I would be entertained with three candidates, you know, to watch, since I'm not involved, it'll be especially more fun, but, um, so, so, uh, I don't know, I.
I mean, we had three last time with Mayor.
Yeah. We had four for three slots, but, well, for two slots, well, I guess we did have. Anyway, I, I gave those other councils some credibility, and that's the only reason I said and sent you the emails. But I'm surprised, I'm surprised Jody, I'm just surprised Jody isn't high on this. I thought it meant less work. Apparently not.
Depends on how many phone calls she gets.
Yeah, maybe on the front end, it's less.
Um, I haven't said anything, and I, the only thing that I would say is, being someone who's never ran for office before, um, the whole process was pretty overwhelming. And I did like, I did like the process of the ranked choice voting as far as what Carrie mentioned, that, you know, we, we campaigned together and it was very nice and it was very, you know, if, if, if he gets your number one vote, at least give me your number two vote. You know, I liked that, like, give me your second vote, I'll take that. You know, I just liked the nicety of it. Um, I think it's designed for a small community like ours, and so I, for me, it was, I don't know, it was just easier. It felt a little bit easier. I mean, I did go door knocking, that was scary, but, um, just to be able to campaign with others was, it made it easier, so.
All right, so if there's no further comment from the council on this, I, I do think that there's value areas. I know you're here for at least this particular purpose, uh, among maybe others, but while the discussion is underway, let's open it up for comments from, uh, residents, if, if you have something you'd like to say. If you don't have anything to say, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but if you have something, please step up to the microphone and, uh, let us know how you feel.
Yeah, that's, that's the one, you gotta speak into the microphone. So, um, I came tonight, uh, just because I wanted to see how the discussion goes. I'm actually encouraged by the discussion, uh, that I've heard so far. I'm a fan of ranked choice voting. Uh, one of the reasons why, and we touched on that multiple times in this conversation, is the civility factor. Uh, the current, uh, method of one and done, uh, for voting, uh, does tend to spark off a lot of negativity, does tend to spark off a lot of polarization, right? It does, depending on your political affiliation, uh, and what you think of the word disenfranchised, uh, it does kind of put you on the outside. Ranked choice voting does a better job of including everyone regardless of political affiliation. The other thing it does is it also encourages a change in those who are running for office, not just from the civility perspective, but even in larger voting, uh, uh, larger cities, you, if you're talking about at a national level, you know, your typical campaign manager model where they're out there pushing their campaign, that doesn't work very well for ranked choice voting, and that's one of its benefits, right, is, uh, the, the candidate has to change their strategy. Um, the other thing I like about it is, is it goes from a voting against to a voting for methodology for the voter. So often, and we've seen this over and over and over again, where I don't like person B, but I like person A even less, so I'm going to, I'm going to do whatever it takes to keep person A out of office, instead of saying, no, I really want to make an educated decision on this, and I think this is actually his best for office. Nice thing about ranked choice voting is, is if I think this person's best for office, but for some reason doesn't make the cut, this is the second person I think is best for office, and I'm still involved as a citizen in that process, where if it's just straight-line voting, especially in, like I said, in highly polarized political environments, I could be one and done out of that question. Right? So that's why I was talking about that disenfranchised thing and how you find that. So, uh, it's, it's one of the reasons why I'm all for it. It is going to take some adjustment to be sure. Um, the graphs from last year were interesting, they were actually kind of interesting to watch as they went along. Um, I would agree that we do need to stay away from predictive terminology in those graphs. Um, they, they did kind of have a little bit of finality to them, and the reality of it is, is there was no finality until the rest of the votes were actually, uh, actually counted. And so that did give it a little bit of a negative, uh, connotation for some folks, because they're saying, wait, what happened? And yes, with everything else was going on at the national level, everyone had, you know, every possible, you know, excuse under the sun, what might be happening behind closed doors to support their vote. But, um, in this particular case, I would say the, the improvements that we talked about, that Joshua talked about, I think are right in line with some of the things that I would have improved on that interface, and I am interested to see how that works for three seats. And, uh, methodology that he's described does sound like it will help out. But anyway, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So one more question, Josh, then who, who would be the one that, uh, I mean, is it, is it, uh, you know, Mr. Davidson, is it, is it Roseanne? Who is it that would kind of help us through this methodology and, and these changes that Aries was just talking about too?
Yeah, as I understand, the, uh, the, the point of contact is typically Carly Jarvis, who is the, uh, usually the supervisor in charge of working with cities on something like this. Um, you know, I, I, they, they might make some changes this year, but, but I doubt it. She was historically the one that, uh, worked with the city recorders on details like that.
I just had a question for Janet and Ben and Doral. Would it made any difference to you when you ran, whether it was ranked choice voting or going the primary route, whether you would run or not?
I don't think I would have ran. If there was a primary, um, you know, I, a lot of people questioned if I even had time to run, and so I don't know. I mean, it would have been so much more involved, you would have had to campaign a lot longer, probably spent a lot more money, which is fine, um, but a lot more money. And so I don't know, I mean, I feel like it's hard to get good people to want to run anyway, um, and it was overwhelming and I did, one of the biggest reliefs for me was I didn't know a lot of people. That was another problem. I'd lived here a long time, but probably didn't know a lot of people. And so to be able to get invited, um, I got invited, you know, to different things, the other candidates had events, and I got invited to participate in theirs, and I got to meet a lot of new people that I wouldn't have had the opportunity to, had it been a tradec, traditional election process. So for me, it was very beneficial. Um, I got to meet a lot of new people. Um, I did go in the areas where I didn't know anybody, I would go almost every night and knock doors and try to talk to people and meet people, and that helped a lot, and I got to understand where a lot of citizens stood on, you know, different topics. But, um, if it had been a traditional, I don't know that I would have ran.
Um, I think I still would have. Um, but I, I think also that extended amount of time especially probably benefited me in some capacities, because I had more time to get to know more people, right? Because I think I was one of the least known mayoral candidates there. Um, and so that was beneficial, but also having that shorter time, I think, did help, but I, I would have run either way.
I, if you can hear me, I, because this is important. I, I was very excited, I was very excited that there were, I don't know why I can't hear myself.
We can hear you, Doral.
Okay. I, I was excited that there were more candidates than positions available on the council. And so I, I didn't think deeply about the different methods of voting when I decided to run. I ran because I love this city. And, and, and the most important thing that, that when I realized what ranked choice voting was, I, of course, I, I feel underneath it all, but I want new blood in the city all the time. And, and some of the comments against me were I've been on too long, and they're a hundred percent right. I was so excited with the caliber of people that ran in, in our election, and I contact, I tried to contact them immediately, as soon as I found out they were running. And Janet was the only one that communicated with me, and we became friends, and it was incredibly positive. And I in fact told Janet one time, hey, you're my number one. And, and I don't know who's number two, I think that's a quote I gave her, but, but I, I like a short election cycle. We don't need to go for many months of the year stressing, it's huge stress to run as a member, you know, to get on this council or maybe any council. I just was surprised how stressful it was to wait and to, and to battle for, you know, worry about elections, and if there was a primary and then another, it, it could stress some people out and not, maybe they wouldn't want to run. I frankly want a lot of people to run for any of the seats that are open. Um, I, I don't know, we, we just need, you know, a lot of input from citizens and from the city, and new people are good, and, and maybe a couple of oldies are okay too, but, but I, I liked ranked choice, and I, I, I wasn't bothered that I was losing for a moment, you know, that, that, that didn't bother me. You know, you feel bad when people hate you, but, but you go on and, and, and I think I would vote for this way of voting again, just to try and make it in, 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 in a candidate's view, a simpler process, um, a, a, and, and to get it done quickly and, and, and seems to me more simply. And I don't like si, I do not like signs all over the city. I wanted to take mine down the day after I put them up. So that, that alone, Dave Pratt mentioned, you know, let's not ha, let's not clutter the city for that long. Thanks, Wayne.
All right. Well, with that, uh, Josh, thanks for, uh, being here and, uh, offering your insights. Jody, thanks for yours too. So, uh, if there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on. Item three. I can hardly say this without throwing up a little bit in my mouth.
I know.
Let's just skip it. Let's table it.
No, can't happen, we're not accepting it. Denied, denied.
Okay, well, uh, it is with deep regret that, uh, Craig has announced that he's retiring, so, um, we, uh, there, don't consider this our formal goodbye, we've got a few, uh, we've got a few things in the works, but, uh, but I, I, I do just want to take a moment and say thank you. You, you've been amazing to work with. I wish I had gotten a longer, uh, amount of time to work with you, but, uh, it's, it's been a great thing working with you, and no doubt you've done tremendous things for our city, so.
Yeah, I just, I could talk to you.
Please do.
Yeah, so it wa, it was a hard decision. Um, I'm excited, but I, I'm not going to forget the time that I had here. You know, I love the city, it's, we got a great department, like we got one of the best departments around, it's in good hands, I mean, you're not going to notice me gone, and they, that'll carry it on. But what's, what's made it possible is the support that we've gotten from the council. It, we couldn't do this without the council and the mayor's support. A, a, and you have no idea how big that is. It's, i- i- it's instrumental. I mean, we could, we could have the same people, and if we don't have support from you guys, we don't have a department. So hats off to the council, and, you know, I've worked with a number of them, and they've all been very supportive, and I, I, I can't say thanks enough. Um, it's been a delight of my life doing this role, and it, uh, it's hard, I'll, I'll always remember it, and I'm sure I'll be able to help out somehow with Ted.
You see smoke up there, come on up.
I know, I told Carrie, I told Ted that I could come up and I'll carry his, his laptop around for him and. I know. I told Carrie, I told Ted that I could come up and I'll carry his, his laptop around for him. But no, I, I just wanted to say that. So I appreciate everything and the mayor. I mean, I, I loved working with you. Your standup. So I appreciate that. But yeah.
The other thing I feel bad about is that on this agenda, it says the retirement of the fire chief. And you were definitely all that. But you were a lot more than that in multiple capacities within the city. And I don't know that all the residents understood that, you know, all the different hats that, well, all of our employees wear multiple hats, but you, you carried yours very well and just helped bring some, some much needed skill set to our city at a time when we needed it. For that, I think I as a resident say thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, I, you know me, I don't like, I just like to do my thing and then move on.
Well, then let us gush for a minute.
And it be done. I don't like a lot of, yeah, I mean, I, I bet that statement. I mean, I, I feel good about that.
I mean, we think about all the things that are now normal in our city. We have a fire station. We have equipment. We have, we have trained personnel. We have chipper days. We have our expo. We have so many things that started at ground zero that now we couldn't imagine ourselves without. And a lot of that is because of your efforts and your work and we really appreciate it. I personally want to thank you.
Well, thanks. And once again, it's the team. I mean, it's it, if it wasn't for everybody, it wouldn't have happened. I mean, one person can't make this happen. So I mean, keep that in mind moving forward and this, yeah, you guys have been great.
Please join me applauding Craig. Oh, now Doral's got something to say.
I've always got a lot to say. To add on with what Carrie, to add on, that's correct. Sorry, Carrie. But to add on with what Carrie said, Craig has also built relationships all over the county and with, with other chiefs and, and, and those relationships will benefit our city for years and years. He's well respected. I've had people tell me just at this last fire school, they'd come up to me and they'd compliment our chief and how lucky we were to have someone like that to lead us. And so we're, we're going to miss you, but Ted is going to fill your shoes. It's good. It's going to go forward and, and because of the group we have. But, but I personally, and I can speak as a third assistant to Craig for years, it's been really a joy. He, he does things in debriefs and debriefs for a fire department are really critical. They help us improve. He does and says things in debriefs that brings out our best and fixes our worst. And I just want to thank you for years of service.
Well, thanks, Craig.
I can't believe you're leaving that new fire truck to Ted.
I know.
All right. Well, and now it's time to tighten the noose around Ted's neck. So item four.
Lock the doors.
The appointment of city fire chief. Ted has come highly recommended and I would propose that he be appointed the fire chief position and Craig steps. So.
But in the business section, right?
Yeah, no, this is just discussion. If anybody has any comments. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking for a vote right now.
Ted, do you want to tell us why you want to do this? Why, why do you want to do this? Yeah.
He went to a whole bunch of training and he's next in line. Who knew all those things were going to add up to this?
Why did you say yes?
So Craig, the only thing that's, for me, is just moved him from my contact list to my speed dial. Um, no, I, I, I mean, I, the only reason, well, not the only reason, but there are several reasons why I do this. Why I got into the fire, right? First of all, is because I, I love to serve, love to serve people, love to serve the communities that I, I live in. So that's why I do this, because I love the people. But one of the reasons why I was, I was open to this appointment was, was for that reason, one, and two, because working with this department has just been incredible. I mean, the people in this department, although, you know, I mean, Craig has set up such a great department, organization, the people that's been brought on. We're going to move forward greatly with the people we have. So I'm doing this because we've got a lot of great people on support and I just want to help how I can.
Well said. All right.
And he knows what he's doing.
Yep.
Well, that remains to be seen. Yeah.
Well, we appreciate your years of training to be able to, be able to step in on such a short notice. I mean, I think that's one thing that a lot of communities might not have somebody available and ready as much as you are. So thank you for dedicating your, your time to the city prior, even though you didn't think this was coming.
Yeah, no, this and company best.
By the way, I would say that about our entire department.
Yeah.
That's, that's the one thing that I think is the coolest about our fire department is how much those, all of them train. And it is, it is cool to, you know, drive, drive up and see all the cars parked out there and everybody doing the training.
Thursday.
It's neat.
Every Thursday. Yeah. Yeah, it's cool. And they're all great. I mean, you know, I know a lot of departments, I don't know a lot of departments, you know. I, I hear stories about things that go on, but, but our department has really no political issues. We all get along great. Everybody jumps in, helps where they can. So it's a great department. So I'm, I'm just glad to be a part of it and help how I can.
I just have one question, kind of from a logistics standpoint. Does this have any impact from a Johnson DeMille standpoint?
Um, maybe if I tell them, but I don't think so. I, no, I have actually already talked to them about this and it's not uncommon for a lot of people in our company to serve in service positions, right? It's a pretty common thing. It just varies on what they do. So this is just the same as what a lot of, and our company is big on that fact. They give us one day off a year just for service to a community. So they're very big on serving in communities. And a lot of our people do it. And I've already told them and, and I may, well, that may even mean I may work a little more. I don't know. You guys know, some of you know, I work from the city sometimes and may do that more often, you know.
So it doesn't cause us, it's not going to cause us a, a problem though from being able to keep you in the office, right? So we should be good.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not sacrificing you in one spot for another.
You can just do that.
Yeah, it's your turn next.
Thanks, Ted. And.
All right, hold on.
All right. Design and construction of West Loford Drive.
Yep. So I submitted a proposal. What I think, what, we went through the information at LEI, where they had gotten the design. We looked what it would take to complete it. And I think it came in pretty close to some numbers I had thrown out before. So there was two costs we provided. One was to complete the design and get a contractor on board. Basically, we call that the contractor procurement process. So that's one cost. The second cost in that letter was kind of at the, when we met a couple of councils ago, the council asked that we be involved in the construction aspects, oversee the construction part of the project. So we provided a separate cost to do that as well. So there's the total of the two or, you know, each one's broken out. So I provide that to the city and, and I think if, you know, depending on the city's decision, we're ready to move forward anytime.
Okay, great.
And Mayor, did you, did Chris say that we had the money to separate that out from our original budget?
To separate?
The cost for them overseeing it as well as the construction.
Are you asking if we have enough money for both things?
Yes, that we set aside, all that money that we set aside previously.
Yeah.
Does it cover both?
Chris, no, he's not anymore. He had to leave, but I know that Chris has been part of the email exchange, so I don't think there's any surprises with what that added cost of project management brings, but.
Well, it was part of the, the quotes that you gave earlier. So I think it's.
And the one question that Chris asked in the email, just to clarify, is that there's one cost to get through design and contractor procurement. If we find the bids all come in really high and the city cancels the project, then the second cost in our proposal wouldn't apply, right? Because that's the second part of it.
That's kind of what I was wondering.
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there are no other questions, then unless you're item six, which you're not.
Yeah, I think that's.
Thank you. Okay. Post-ordinance amending ordinance 202208 flow rate for fire hydrants. That is, oh, that issue, okay. I thought maybe it would be Corbin.
It's like, it's fire. It's a fire thing. Fire statute.
Ted, welcome.
Well, yeah, thanks. No, this would just be at, so a, a while back, you might recall, we passed an ordinance changing the flow rate and storage requirements for fire. After Chief did some research and I, we discovered that the flow requirement at a fire hydrant is limited by some requirements of the IFA to 2,000 gallons a minute. So because of that requirement in the IFA, we felt it best to reduce or change our ordinance to match their requirement. So this would be just for the flow rate at a hydrant that a developer would have to provide in installing a city infrastructure, right? In talking with our impact fee company, we can still keep the storage requirement the same, which was 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours or 540,000 gallons for fire storage. We don't have to change that. And we, after discussions, we felt it best to keep the storage requirement as we've had it because, you know, living in a wildland community, having larger homes over 10,000 fast on some of these homes. So, so we would, you know, we were proposing that we don't change the storage requirement, but we would change the flow and at, at the hydrant. And that's what this ordinance does. And that lines up with the IFA.
On that. All right. Item. Cooperative agreement.
And this is Everbridge?
Yes. Jody, is that you? It's Carrie.
Okay. As you know, six years ago, we signed the original contract with the county for the Everbridge service and they, it is time now to renegotiate that. And so the county has that and the we are, I guess, cosponsors is what they would call that to the Everbridge, which keeps it lower cost for us overall. We presented that before with what the cost was based on population. So it's, it's what, 278 for us per year for the next five years to have that system in place. All of these cities have, are, are part of that agreement so that if the county has something, they can send something out countywide. If we have something, we can just send it to even just a part of our residents. There's a lot of different things inside of it. It's been very beneficial to us and I know that we were kind of talking over some of the concerns we had. I talked with Peter. I didn't, he didn't bring that up tonight, but with regards to us having an attorney look it over, all of the cities that have had, who have attorneys have weighed in and none of them found concerns and neither did the county attorneys. And so he said it would be okay for us to waive that if we wanted to. Hopefully felt comfortable with the recommendations from others to have this signed.
Will he put that in writing though? Because it's a, it's a term of the contract. That was the only reason.
Yeah, he was going to discuss it tonight because I told him earlier, we had a meeting right until, right up until this meeting and I at the county and I said, can you please bring that up? And I, we both forgot. So I'm sure that that's something that would be easily rectified.
I mean,
All the cities on here have not done it.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know how it would play out in terms of becoming a problem. And they would say, well, you didn't have your attorney review it, but it's hard to imagine.
Yeah, ultimately, it's the county's contract. And then, so overall, it's, it's their responsibility overall. And then we just are, are part of it with the, with the county.
So is there a change in the money or anything?
Nope.
So it's just extending?
It's just extending what we already have. They have other services that the county's looking into for maybe next year or the year after, if they, if we want to see additions. Everbridge has expanded, you know, they're a national notification system. So other communities have expanded in certain areas. They're probably, they might be looking into that for next year or so, but for now, it's, the contract is basically the same and the same formula is put in place of, of the cost based on population.
I've been really happy with it.
Yeah.
It's the best, it's the best notification service I've had since living here. So.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Cheap.
Very cheap.
We could never find something just for us to do at that rate. Well, and that was one of the problems we had with those other systems. Not that the people running it weren't good, but it just was, like, it was either you had to get to the city or only Chris could send the messages or, you know, there were just a lot of weirdnesses. And this has been really nice that we, it's been consistent. I'm actually getting all the messages. So that's nice.
And I like that we can get things just internally and, but if there was a countywide emergency, we would know immediately.
Yeah.
And so would our residents. So.
Yeah, I, I don't see any downsides to it. Craig.
Keep in mind, too.
Craig, still got to play by the rules.
No, you don't. You can break them.
Yeah. On the, on the Amber Bridge, when our sirens go off, that's also how dispatch notifies all of our residents for evacuations. It's through the Everbridge system. So it's kind of tied together.
Great. Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on. Item eight, we will have the table. Wayne is working on a policy and, oh, Wayne's got, maybe we won't table it. Maybe we'll discuss it. Thank you.
Um, a little bit ago, the mayor asked me to, I'm not partly volunteering for it too, to put together some guidelines on our, on disposing of our public property. So I took a look at the state ordinance and Spanish Fork ordinance and Salem ordinance and crafted that into an ordinance for us. So a lot of the, a lot of the guy, the guidelines there, the process have come from other ordinances, including the state. They, the, they've put the city finance director as an overseer of this process and kind of a point of contact with getting things done. There's another thing that our city has, we haven't done efficiently is to keep track of all of our public property. And so the first paragraph in that ordinance puts responsibility on the city finance director to, to keep, keep those property records. And that's what the other, our Spanish Fork and Salem have done as well. So that we, we do have tracking mechanism and, and can better keep track of our property. But that's the ordinance is drafted. It's not intended to take any kind of vote on tonight. Would like you to take a look at it. Any thoughts that you have or questions, if you can get those back to me. And it's something we'll probably need to have a public hearing on. hearing on. So when that time comes, we'll go forward with that process, but that's kind of a draft right now of, of how we'd handle it. I found it interesting that none of those ordinances from the state or those two cities specifically state how you surplus property. What they've said is, it's just according to law. So I've put a couple of alternatives in there and use the caveat and other item, or other ways that are lawful to do. So it's kind of a conglomerate there, but nobody really identified the specific step by step by step as far as when it comes actually to surplusing and more, or getting rid of it once the decision is made to do that. So that's the way, that's worded that way, is to give us a little bit more direction, providing it's lawful to do that. So.
So anyway, I'm very familiar with keeping track of assets in a large bureaucracy. One thing I would recommend in this is that we put a dollar amount on when we're going to track an asset, so we're not tracking things like pencils and paperclips, but instead only assets over a certain value.
What would you suggest as a value?
Honestly, I would say $500.
We've got computers that are maybe less than that.
No, they're not. Not anymore.
Okay.
They're 1,200 at least. So I, I just, again, we don't want to.
Not quite as much as your phone, but almost.
We, we want to be smart about what we actually track, because just the act of tracking them. I mean, I have to track probably four to 500 assets at the law school, and it's, it's a major pain in the butt. It's really, really difficult. And so if we have, if we at least put a threshold there, it makes it easier.
Okay.
The other thing I would, I would say is, you know, we, we talk about disposed stuff through an auction. A lot of assets nowadays are, you know, KSL Online, or eBay, or things like that. That just seems to be a simpler way. Obviously, if we're talking, you know, a city, like a truck or something like that, then that's, that would be through, you know, auction sites that Corbett knows a lot about. So that kind of a place. But just making sure we've got verbiage in there that makes it, makes it okay to go through those mechanisms. The other thing I would put in there is some concept of asset depreciation. So whenever you purchase an asset, and again, this is something Chris already does, he has to track the depreciation of that asset. And you might actually say that, you know, if it, it becomes surplus property once the depreciation's complete, once it's fully depreciated, and then it can be surplus. Doesn't mean it has to be. Like, you might have a computer that is six years old instead of three, even though you've got a three-year depreciation. But at least that gives you kind of a time marker for when something is now depreciated and done.
Although I will say, Dave, that it's, it's not just to get rid, I mean, we've just got a lot of junk. I think you could characterize it over the years. And so, you know, whether it's all been depreciated to zero or whatever, I just, I don't want to tie our hands with a depreciation calculation.
There's something to it, the fact that once it goes to zero, it would be reviewed.
Yeah.
To see if it's.
It's actually the opposite of what you're saying. When you said we've got a lot of junk, that automatically means that's been depreciated to zero long ago. What the, what it does is it just, whenever you purchase an asset, it starts a clock. And each asset's different, so vehicles might be five years, computers are typically three years, and so forth. Once the clock is over, then that's when it can be reviewed for surplusing. Does that make sense?
Not that it will be.
It doesn't have to be surplus.
Right, no, I, I'm wanting to not have to go through that process for everything that maybe we want to get rid of, where we have to.
Well, when I say, when I say. Oh, I, you wouldn't, with the stuff that's been here for 20 years, it's done already. You, you don't.
We would have to do the math, is what you're saying, right? I mean, we would have to.
I don't think so.
Do some sort of a schedule that illustrates it.
That's not what I'm saying at all.
So how would we go? I'm just curious how, like, let's say we found.
If we've got something that's 20 years old, it's done.
Okay, but let's say we got a tar pot that is not 20 years old, but.
Okay, well, what would be?
We don't need it anymore, and.
What would be its depreciation? Has it depreciated?
I would assume it has.
That's Chris's job.
Right, no, I know.
Chris, Chris knows that already.
Right. But you're, you're saying that would be a condition, we would have to run the depreciation numbers before we sold anything?
No, not at all.
All right. Well, that's, that's what I'm concerned.
I'm saying use the depreciation as a trigger for maybe we ought to surplus that.
Okay. But not, not as a condition?
Not as a condition, but as a trigger.
Okay. All right.
That makes any sense?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I was thinking, I think there's, Corbett, if I'm, I, maybe I'm wrong, but isn't there a state government site for surplus of, of public assets? So, so we already have a place that if it's something that is sellable, that we might put it on there. Of course, there's always KSL and the others afterwards, but as long as we know where it's at and where the money's going, I think that's the important part of, of tracking. What is surplus? Why is it surplus? Where was it sold? How much did we get? The other thing I was thinking about is, I mean, we talk about this public property, which some of that is that number D parcel or real property. We have some of that, but also there have been times, I mean, well, one, we didn't even know we owned that property down at the corner of Woodland Hills Drive in the, in the highway, and then all of a sudden, they, they tell us, oh, we want to expand the road. You guys own that property. And we all went, what? And so sometimes, I guess, identifying where our land really is based off of county records, not just in our city boundaries, because we may own land other places that we don't know of, just to make sure we have an accurate count of those parcels.
Yeah, I agree.
And then the third thing is, sometimes when someone is developing, they might need a little extra space, and they might say, hey, let's do a quick claim deed and swap properties. I mean, I think we did that with the salt shed, and we've done it in other areas. So maybe adding one more thing than if it's going to be a land swap, what that.
Very good. I'll make some of those changes, and we'll put this out again to everybody. So.
Hey, Corbett, what would you say, would you agree with that $500 amount? Okay. I'm just wondering, you know, tools? Would you want to keep track of tools? No, can't? I'm thinking maybe even some of your power tools, not like wrenches and sockets and stuff like that, but some of those tools, you know, if they disappear, they can add up pretty quick, but I don't want it to be encumbering either. Well, that's just still.
Well, disappear means a lot of things, right? It's, somebody said it on the.
I, I understand, but what I'm saying with the limit is just, again, you got to realize, tracking means work, too.
I completely understand.
So if you, if, if, if you're, if you're tracking something, then you're having to manage it, you're having to work it, and that can be overhead.
I mean, it's city office stuff, it's all the fire department stuff, I mean, there's a lot of things, yeah.
It's already been depreciated to zero.
Yeah, exactly.
The chiropractor.
Dave's is that.
Hey, I'm in the black one, people.
Just because it's depreciated to zero doesn't mean we get a new one.
Look at this vinyl.
You should swap the door.
Jan, did you have a comment? Maker? Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike. By the way, thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
For sure. Thanks, Wayne.
Do we, do we already have a, some sort of spreadsheet that Chris uses to track all of our assets? Or is that going to be something new, too?
No, we, we've talked about that, and there, there are barcodes that you could put on different items that I believe should make it at least a little bit more manageable administratively.
You do inventory. Yeah, yeah.
But we also need a way to get rid, I mean, so we want to track the things that we're going to keep, but we also want to get rid of the things that are just taking space. So that's kind of the objective here.
The garage sale.
Yep, it is.
So I'm not sure the legality of, we've talked about a few of these things, Craig and I, I've actually been helping, I was helping to sell equipment. We use the public surplus website or, or auction site. But I think something that we need to do is include, if it fails to sell on the auction, what is our next steps? Can we, can the city sell it as a bill of sale? We need to figure out the legality of that so that we've got, got those options in place. So we tried to sell the hot pot. It didn't sell. We posted it multiple times, but we had a buyer who was willing to buy it, but he just, it just didn't work out. So if we, we get something, we put it on the auction site. If it's illegal, we should be able to bill of sale it with the city, is my, my thought, as long as it goes through the, you know, the mayor's bill of sale, if it's under his, you know, your purview. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I agree.
I think that should be put in there that we've got.
It is other legal means.
Yeah, other legal, yes. So I think we need to look at the legal side of that and make sure, see what's, what's available to us, because we've already seen it. So I just think that whether we put it in the writing, or at least know it somewhere, that we know this is our option, we failed to say, or failed to auction.
Yeah, no, great suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions there? All right. Thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Brian. City budgetary items, we already covered that. Update on city grants. Carrie, you got?
Yep. I, I don't know. I didn't ask you prior, but did we use some of that money to change anything with regards to our system? If not, then, I mean, because I have to report on that right away.
No, I know.
And I didn't, I didn't get that from you, but if that needs to be a separate offline discussion, we can have that.
I don't think it needs to be offline. I, I know Wayne and Jody looked at the other service, and it seemed like maybe it wasn't everything we hoped it would be. Is that a fair assessment, Wayne? You're shaking your head. Maybe it's not a fair assessment.
The, the several cities that we talked to are large cities, very large cities, and they didn't feel that this, the, the company had enough resources to support them in that. But the smaller cities have been, seem to be fine, those who have taken it. So.
Great.
That seems to be kind of the cutoff with large versus small, but the smaller ones are.
So we still want to move forward with that one?
Yeah.
So do we know when that's moving forward? Because I, I have to report on it right, pretty much right away. And so if it's, if it's something that's in the works for doing, you know, soon, I would like to.
Jody's the mastermind there.
So I talked to Mike on it. Maybe get back to the late. Okay. Okay, yep. Just let me know how much, so I can take that off and make sure I do the reporting correctly. Also, I talked with the mayor, and we're going to revise the ad hoc committee that we had used previous in 2021 to start this whole process, to help with, with just the administration and to get things rolling. It's just a lot for one person when I'm already doing something else that's important. And so I, I'm going to call those people back in to help with the process of getting things going. ARPA funds, I did, I was able to talk with a few people at the league meetings who gave me contacts for possible funding. So I'm following up with them and to see if that's the case, if we can find some matching money. There are, there are some zero interest loans available, but we, we can't pay those. So, but at this time, there may be, maybe be, there may be some other things available, because the legislature did redefine what rural means, and there's a good chance that we actually qualify, even though we're in a second-class city county. There are a few that we might qualify for, so I'm going to follow up on those two items.
Carrie, can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
That community development committee. Is a committee.
Well, that's what I asked the mayor about, if it could be ad hoc, so it's not a permanent committee like our others. So if we would still need to notice and do all of those and keep minutes and all of that, or if it's because it's just for logistics of getting the grant off the ground, it's not decision-making? If that would be, it would be just kind of a temporary, maybe six months?
I, and I didn't appreciate the public notice potential obligations that that would trigger.
I guess in a sense, a decision-making group, because it is going to.
Yeah. Well, think about it and let me know, because if we need to submit and do all the stuff over again that we did before, because I think we put in, originally, we put in a charter, or whatever we called it, statement for it originally, but basically, I just wanted to get people together so I have more hands.
We did. We put in a charter, and so I think because we did that, we need to do it as a committee, which means we're going to have to open it up to the general public if they want to attend.
Okay. I will, I will get the, the list together and submit it to the council for approval.
But is, is there a way that we could do it in?
Not be so much a burden for you.
More as a just utilizing resident resources. I, I, I mean, we've lost Shay, too.
Yeah, and that's, that was my, my concern there, is we're, we're a little shorthanded in it, and we were actually discouraged, again, at my training, to do all these committees.
It takes a lot of the time to record them, to do all of that, and yet we want transparency. It's, there's this balance that's going on.
And sometimes the committees think they have more of a decision-making role, and there becomes this, well, we've advised you to do this, and now as a council, you're not. And it causes a little bit more contention that's not needed in cities. Maybe what you could do is bring to the council four names for an ad hoc group of individuals who'll help you write the RFP.
Yeah.
And then it's just an RFP writing group, something like that?
Yeah, well, I think it would be more than just the RFP, because I, I'm thinking of using them logistically when we actually, like, have the public meetings, like, oh, you're going to open the door and you're going to make signs.
Well, that would be just volunteers, you're doing them.
So that's why I'm thinking it would be kind of an ad hoc committee for, you know, maybe six months, or, or at least to the end of the year, where it's just a temporary thing. And then if we need to, after a certain phase in the projects, that then we say, okay, who is now on the formal committee that we would, if we needed to do things going forward, that would take action items or advise the council?
And let me.
This is just logistics. So.
Let me think about it, yeah.
Except we add ad hog.
That's why I thought ad hog.
Yeah, other cities have done that, and they've gotten trouble.
Volunteer group.
Yeah, I, I like volunteer group, or, let's just not name it all. I mean, who needs labels, right? I mean, these are just volunteers.
Yeah. Just let me know what.
And it's also scheduling of the building. So we're starting to run into multiple committee, I mean, committees, meetings, and we're starting to run into some scheduling problems.
Overlapping, some feelings hurt.
Yeah, and so we've got to be mindful of what's going on there.
Thank you.
It's hard to have too many things. Even though we have multiple rooms, it still is hard.
Right, no, and I'm totally sympathetic to your situation, Carrie, and I, I want to be supportive. I just, we do, I mean, Craig's bailing on us, Shay bailed on us. We've got every resources, so we just have to be careful how we allocate those. Okay. Thank you. Doral, you there? Yeah, anything on fire? Maybe we should have Craig give his final briefing on fire. I don't know.
Now we can't hear you.
I guess Craig has to.
Craig will do it.
Told him I'd help, Mr. Ryan. So, yeah, the only thing I was able to, we had a fire department that was getting rid of some of their old SCBA's tanks, and they matched what we needed. So I was able to pick up enough tanks. And some of them, to my surprise, were purchased in 2020, so those could last us almost 20 years from 2020. So, but the other, the other tanks, I mean, it's not enough for a full set, but the other tanks will get us through 2026 at least. So that'll give us around that we can apply for, for one more round of grants, if we don't get this grant that I applied for earlier. if we don't get this grant that I applied for earlier. There's still no word on it. Uh, it's a theme, but they said when you're not denied, it's a good thing. It's still there. So, I mean, being that we're almost through April and they were going to start letting people know on the first of April, so, uh, just hanging there. And if, if we get them, that's great. If we don't, we're at least, we're at least compliant for safety, safety of the firefighters till 2026. So just wanted to be on that.
Yeah, no, great point there. Thank you.
And Ted knows all the grants that he's supposed to keep up with, right?
Yeah.
Just making sure, Ted. Cause there's probably a little bit of a list of, of grants for fire. Yep.
Doral, anything else I, I, that you want to try signing?
No, we can't hear you.
Thumbs up if that, you ready to move on? Okay. All right, thanks all the same. Okay, uh, Parks, Trail and Recreation, Councilmember one.
Yeah, I, uh, got an update from Sherry, uh, today on it and haven't heard anything yet, but hoping to hear sometime this week. It was supposed to be this week, maybe tomorrow. Uh, but she did check the website and still, still no decision yet on that grant. But should be good. Everything looked good. Everything was good, so.
All right, thank you. Item 11, Chairman Fratson, Planning Commission.
Uh, the first item on there is, um, related to, uh, ordinance change, well, uh, a new ordinance on culverts. It, uh, kind of follows the requirement that we place on homeowners where they have a sidewalk in front of their home to keep it clear. We talked to the mayor about this and this requires our citizens to clean their driveway culverts out and keep it clear from debris to the degree they possibly can. Uh, we recognize in the past, it's been kind of a service that the fire department has helped out with. We want to minimize that. But if there's an absolute blockage or something that a homeowner can't get, then we'll talk to the fire department and see if they can't help out with that. But this puts the onus on the homeowner to, uh, keep their culverts, uh, clear of debris flow so that the water can flow through them. So that's the essence of that. We've had a public hearing on it in, um, Planning Commission and, uh, uh, it received unanimous minus one approval. But we'll, we'll work through that.
What was the minus one?
Yeah, he didn't vote, he didn't want it because he's got a culvert. He's trying to get clear and he can't. We had some people offer to go over and try to help him clear it. So it was just a personal preference of voted against, against the ordinance.
I'm kind, I'm kind of one of those. I mean, when they were putting in the water pipe in front of my house, for the first time since I'd moved in there, I found the culvert. It's four feet down. I don't even know why you would call that a culvert, but it's way down there.
Yeah.
So anyway, it's, I don't know what to do about that.
So will we still help, um, like if there's a widow or someone elderly or someone disabled, will we still, will the fire department still be able to help some of those people?
Is Ted still here?
I, I mean, I, we.
We've got a slow yes from them, but they don't want to make it regular.
I don't want to commit them, but I, I think there's some citizens that would probably need some assistance.
Yeah.
Well, our culverts are kind of one of those things that at least, I mean, I'm sure all of you watched the melt and kudos to those who actually got in and helped fix that issue. But I think that's one of those issues that we need to maybe get a little more serious about, maintaining our waterways.
There's a city interest in that, so.
We just got to be better there.
I was also thinking.
Culverts or you're talking?
No, I'm talking more than just drainage.
Spending money.
Yeah.
Well, uh, the, part of the driving force behind this was just that I, I, I do think we don't have the resources to go out and clean out all the culverts all the time. So I think that it is better to put that burden on the residents, just like Wayne said, like with a sidewalk, clear snow and obstruction. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's anything that we're intending to be heavy handed on or, you know, without any compassion with respect to those who stand in need. But, but I do think that we need to make sure that it's not considered our job to clear every culvert in the city.
Yeah, I, I, I guess what I'm talking about is not just the culverts, but the actual sides of the road.
The rock line ditches.
The rock line ditches.
That's one of the things, um, that we brought up at the Public Safety Council meeting, um, is that, uh, idea of, of how do we keep the culverts clean, the rock line ditches clean? And, um, kind of make it, uh, in conjunction with chipper day. So we'd have chipper day. There's always a lot of stuff still left out on the road after chipper day. And so, um, Greg and I and the rest of the team talked about putting out green waste ban, bins so that when then we could say as a secondary thing, you know, you've got your chipping out of the way, clean up those chips, clean up anything else that's left there and put them in the green space. And so we've asked, um, Glenn Anderson to make a really great, one of his great videos to kind of talk about it. So he's going to be interviewing Wayne and now Ted and Corbett on, on how this will be. And we're hoping that it's similar to chipper day. When we first started, everybody's like, what, what? But now they couldn't imagine without it. And that might, we could show the video, I talked to Glenn, to make it kind of timeless that he could, we could show it twice a year saying, hey, clean out those sticks and leaves and whatnot and go forward. The other thing that we talked about was, is it possible? Because citizens, it depends. If they built their home, they knew it was part of building your home to put in your culvert. And that it's your culvert. But people who bought an existing home don't realize that and they think, oh, that's the city's responsibility. So we were having an education issue there. Is there a way, um, to put it on? I, I can't remember who we talked to about this, but putting a note on, on the plat or wherever, when someone buys a home, that that note comes up, you are responsible for your culverts.
We've added this to the, um, to the ordinance.
Okay.
Which says the private property owner is responsible even though they are located on the city right of way.
Yeah, it will, but will that be in so when they buy the house?
Well, no.
They don't get told that when they buy the house.
It's a, it's part of the ordinance. So, you know, we can, this, I think that's the idea of Glenn doing that. We can add that part in there so people make sure they understand that it's city right of way, but still it's their responsibility.
And then the, the next thing is, I know Janet's brought this up about her house and I, other people have too. But through the years, the culverts get smushed or for whatever reason, they're not working. And so again, if they have to tear up the road to put in a new culvert, um, we haven't been responsible for those in the past unless we're doing a water line or something else. We've, you know, kind of helped out. But there's probably quite a few that are no longer functioning, even if they could clean it out. So where do we go from there?
Usually the culvert is not part of the road. It's part of the right of way, but it sits back off the road. So if they need to put a new culvert in, they can easily, it's usually part of their driveway. So they can easily get in there with, you know, with some work, excavation, dig up that culvert and put a new one in. So.
And then paying for the, the cement or the.
Well, it's a driveway, that's up to them, however they want to.
Yeah, right, part of maintenance, just, well, I'm just saying that how will we identify those to let them know your culvert is smashed to pieces? And they're saying, well, I didn't do it. Somebody else must have smashed it. I'm just driving my car, right? So, so that they understand that cost or whatever. Because everybody who, who replaces it, um, then needs to have the other repair work done. And we know from our own city roads, we can't just get the, the road base asphalt people up here that quickly. And so it might just be, I'm just thinking of logistics and, and how to tell our residents, this is going to be a really expensive thing that now you're, you're in charge of.
I think we have to make sure we do not, we do not articulate in any capacity that, you know, we have a liability that we don't.
No, we don't.
So water, watershed off of your property is your problem, right? If it comes off of your property and goes on to another neighbor's property and floods them, you potentially could have a civil suit from one neighbor to another. City's not necessarily involved depending on the situation. So we just have to be very careful when we are, when we communicate. And I love this amendment because it will clearly, because it's not been clear in the past. For me, I have a culvert, I have two culverts and, and massive rock line ditches in front of my homes. Now my home is, they're pretty much useless because of where my home situates in the city.
You don't get the flow.
Correct. I don't have a downhill slope, but I would never, and maybe this is just me, but I'd never assume that the city needed to come and clean all that out, right? Even after the fiber came and destroyed it all, that's still part of my, my deal. And so we just have to be very, very careful that we do not help any resident to assume that they have a right to maintenance from the city where they don't. Because that's where then the frustration can come and that's when we have problems.
So we did have an incident recently with, uh, mud flow that went on to Woodland Hills Drive. So we had to close that road, Ben, you and, and Don, uh, helped Corbett fix that. So would that have been considered a homeowner liability because it came from their property or from their ditch onto the city road? But we fixed it, right? So I'm trying to figure out where is that balance between it's your responsibility or it's our responsibility? Cause once it became on the road, obviously it was ours, but was it their responsibility because it came onto the road?
Well, I think in this capacity, and Corbett, you can correct me here, um, or jump in and, and help. We jumped in on that one because the road was potentially going to be.
Right.
Affected, right? So we had to move quickly to get that fixed before the road started caving. And then it became a public safety, which is our responsibility.
Exactly. But the, but the origin of it is what I'm saying is where are we on origin?
I think. I think this is a bigger thing than this amendment. Uh, yeah, it definitely is, but also I think it's wrong to say that the origin was the ditch. When the, when the water was clearly coming all the way down, the ditches from a mile above and so forth.
Well, exactly. That's what, that's my point is, is it comes from a long ways away? And is it, you know, one person's ditch isn't clean and another culvert is blocked and it just keeps? And so by the time it gets all the way down the hill, it's exacerbated that flow to an issue. Because, um, you know, what you were saying there, Wayne, is it's that going, this, this ordinance then says you need to clean that driveway culvert out, you need to clean your rock line ditch out, and that's your responsibility. And if it's not done, you know, then it just will flow down to the next person or it will flow into the street or whatever. And so I'm just trying to see where the balance is. Um, again, we talked about it at Public Safety and feel this is really, really important. It's just the transition from what's been common practice to what we want to have happen has a little bit of a collision going on. And, and Glenn's video will be very, very helpful, but I don't know if everyone will comply.
Well, I, let me jump in here too. I, I think that like you used the Woodland Hills Drive example. And to me, if there was a plug culvert that was exacerbating that situation, then I think that would be a perfect situation for us to go in and say, hey, look, you're obliged to clear this out. And if they didn't, then it would be a question of, okay, well, your failure to do that, we have the opportunity to cite you, I suppose. And, and if the damage is extensive to our roads, then maybe there's even a civil cause of action that we could bring against that property owner as, I don't know, some sort of a trespass. I don't exactly know how it'd be structured, but, but I, I think that it can be done on a case by case basis. I don't think we need to anticipate every possible way that water is going to cause damage. Uh, I, I think that it can be, if, if there's an issue, we can address it. And if it's an issue stemming from a plug culvert, then we have now the means to address it and.
Well, I know we do have residents who, who claim that we favor one resident over another. And that's where I don't want to go is, is if we've, we said, well, yeah, it's obvious, but we're hoping you get yours cleaned. And then another one comes and we say, you know, you really have to do this. So I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying we need to change what you have in the ordinance. I'm just saying, hey, be mindful that there might be residents on both sides of this who could use it, use it in a way that we're trying to be helpful and encouraging and, and have partners in our city to keep these things clean.
Let me also say, I don't think that what happened on Woodland Hills Drive had anything to do with the culvert. Now, yes, water was going around a few culverts way up above, but where at least it was digging out the road, that was the rock line ditch problem. And, and we do have, we do have a rock line ditch problem.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, so I think you're really mixing kind of two different things, right? Right? So we're talking specifically in the ordinance about culverts, right? Which are a private property owner owned facility. So they're responsible for those. The ditches are part of the cities, built by the developer, part of the city's responsibility, right? So I think you're really kind of getting two discussions mixed into the one ordinance.
So if, if a homeowner destroys a rock line ditch and makes it non-functional, he has a responsibility to make that repaired.
They have to repair it, right?
Cause some of them are.
But if we're getting gravel washing on the road from a rock line ditch, that's not necessarily the property owner. That's what I'm saying. You're, you're kind of mixing a bigger issue than the culvert issue, right?
Right, it just, they're just kind of complement each other on, in a weird way because one could affect the other and.
Yep, that's another issue that.
Oh, Corbett wants the mic. But this, that was more of a, just a discussion item for, for, um, potential issues that we could have. But I appreciate that it's for the culverts specifically, because I think we do need to take care of that. And some residents don't realize that's, that it's a problem or that it's their responsibility, so.
So, uh, Wayne, before you move on, Corbett?
Yes.
I, I just, just to make it clear, you have responsibility for the water that's on the shoulder of the road also. Cause the design, the, the ditches are designed to handle the runoff from the road. And so in that same discussion, that's your water, not the homeowners.
All right, thank you.
It's like Sherry does.
Oh, all right, Sherry.
Um, I think, I don't know, it's on, um, in looking at culverts, I know the city was helpful to me because of all the trucks going up the water tank road and the construction that went on up there by tailors. We just had a mud flow come down deep forest circle and my culvert was totally blocked. So again, if it's coming from the city, if the city's the one causing the problem or a vacant piece of land, um, they're not involved in chipper days. Why would they be involved in cleaning out their culvert that could affect home, current homeowners?
Yeah, no, I, that's, that's a fair point. I, I, and, but I, I think that really the key to this is to move away from any notion that the culverts are the city's responsibilities to maintain. So that's, uh, so there are going to be exceptional cases. There are going to be situations where, you know, just out of a sense of community decency, we're going to say, okay, we want to come up and help Sherry clear that out because, you know, we, we played a role. But, but I do think that it's bad for the city to have a general expectation that any plug culvert is our fault and our responsibility to not only fix, but potentially even address all downstream, uh, consequences of it.
Just something to note, right? You live on a mountain, the water's going to flow down.
Right. All right, well, Wayne?
Okay. Next item here is a request for zone change from R1 to R119 or 550 South Woodland Hills Drive. Earlier this evening, uh, one of the homeowners, Emily Barrero came, but she didn't realize that we were having that presentation, so she couldn't wait for that. We've had a public hearing on this. We received no comment on the hearing.
Did people come though? I had some phone calls about it, so did people show up at all?
Not, not comment on this.
They said, we got a letter, we want to know what it's about, right? So maybe, maybe just talking it out alleviated their.
Maybe they just heard it and so they were fine with it.
Good.
This is where they want to divide their lot into two pieces. And they're just shy of being able to make it one acre each of those. So the alternative is the R119 zone, but they've agreed and they agree to having this included on the plat that the size of those lots, those are locked in, even though it's an R119, which is quarter acre. They don't want to make quarter acre lots. They'll be just shy of one acre by, uh, a few tents here and there. And they've also agreed and Councilman Pratt asked. And they've also agreed, and Councilman Pratt asked the question last time briefly, they've agreed to, uh, have the entrance for the property that they're not living in on Valley Drive and not Woodland Hills Drive, so that...
Any...
Woodland Hills Drive, and we'll include that on the plat as well, to indicate that that's a criteria for that one. Lot is...
No, Wayne, I just, on that, I, I know that you've answered this before, but being zoned R119, I, I just want to make sure that there's no way that they could, because of that zoning, they could further subdivide those lots into much smaller lots and say, hey, we're, we're within your zoning ordinance, is that's going to be addressed as part of this solution? But I can't remember how you said that.
It'll be included in the plat at agreement, and that, uh, status that those lots can't be changed, uh, in size.
Okay.
To anything other than being proposed on the plat. That'll be for a vote tonight. Our recommendation is that you...
Do we have to have a public hearing on a zoning change?
Since we had it.
Okay.
Any other questions on that item?
I spoke to the homeowners around to see if they had any questions, and, and, um, I think we, I, I answered them the best I could, based on what you gave us last time.
Okay.
That's why I was curious if any of them showed up.
Yeah. No, thank you.
Okay.
Uh, item C is a proposal to add a chapter, Title VIII, having to do with addressing sewer connection. And, uh, this would be a new ordinance, um, and it should, it's in your packet, and this, what, we don't have an ordinance that deals with this at present, but it, it would read, just for the record, new home construction...
I was going to say, I don't have it.
I'm sorry. And I think, is it for vote tonight, or just information? Okay. So it'll read, new home construction is required to connect to sewer if the sewer line is within 300 feet of the new residence. This connection is required before the issuance of any temporary or permanent occupancy permit can be issued to occupy the residence. Further, any related sewer fee must be paid in full at the time of connection, whether they be impact fees, maintenance fees, service fees, or otherwise. And Part B, anytime that sewer service is provided and the property owner or occupant refuses or fails to pay said fees, the municipality may cause the water to be shut off from the premise until all payments and arrears have been made. That was adopted by Lee Salem, they have an ordinance on that, to make sure that the sewer fee is paid, and there's a little bit of force behind that. David?
Um, given our large lot sizes, would it pay to say 300 feet of the lot?
Yeah.
Or 300 feet of the residence?
I think lot.
Probably lot, maybe better terminology to use there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two stars.
So Wayne, just to make sure that we're clear on what this is changing, like, currently we do not require new construction to attach the sewer, right? This is...
Verbally, we do, but we don't have any ordinance that is behind that.
No teeth.
Okay.
So this will take care of that.
By now, we thought there would be quite a few hooked up, and...
Of course, the county kind of drives that, though. I mean, like, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against what you're, what you're proposing, I'm just saying, the county's not going to approve a septic tank if they're right next to the sewer line.
If the county knows that, yeah. Oftentimes, they may not realize it. That's something that we'll have to monitor and make sure that...
I mean, kind of, but, I mean, the county's been buts about this.
They're very strict.
They're very, very strict.
Do we have anybody?
They were strict when I built.
Well, they don't want any, they want to get rid of septic.
Do we have any new construction that could have connected to a sewer that uses a septic system, so...
My knowledge, Corbett would better know that. Not to my knowledge.
But I, but I do like the fact that, you know, the section where you say that the water can be shut off, and I, I think that's valid. So, a-again, I'm not against what you're saying, I'm just saying, this is kind of, I'm not sure that we have to have this, because I think the county will enforce it. Having it's not a bad thing, then you at least have it in two places, it's very clear to the homeowner that we won't allow it either.
Actually, sewer connection is cheaper than a septic system. Shouldn't be any hassle, you know? Difficulty that way, there's money by having a, connecting this...
Corbett?
Anything that's built in the original plats A and B isn't, isn't anywhere close to sewer. So the new house is down on Oak, they're, they're nowhere near sewer, and so they, they can't connect to it.
And they're on a cliff. I have no idea how they're going to do a septic tank.
Just pipe.
Yes, just, just a pipe into the ravine.
The, um, this, the county health who approves the sewers, they're very strict. We've got some big places that they, as Corbett said, they can't connect into. The sewer, but the county has put some very strict requirements on alternate septic pipe systems, which may cost them upwards of $1,000 because of the slope and so forth of the property that their, their septic will require, so...
Corbett, do you have any...
Is there anything in there for requiring connection to an existing home when they sell, or a time period or anything like that, if they're close to the sewer?
I think that was a great idea.
Yeah.
If they're within the 300 and it's a sale, the new person could connect.
We can certainly add it.
It's a little more controversial, but, yeah.
I think we've just got to be very, very cognizant of the self-safety of the residents going into the future end of Salem. We need to get as many people on sewer as possible before that bill comes due.
And when you sell your house, I guess, you're flush with cash, so what a great time to...
Flush with cash, unintended.
Yeah, no, that wasn't intended. Get that goal start with that one.
Yeah, I think it's something that you just need to negotiate in your closing terms, right, of a, of a cell. Jody has a comment?
Oh, Jody.
I think you could write into the ordinance that if a dry line has already been installed, possibly you would require them to connect, but, uh, we just got notice today that Payson City is raising their sewer connection fee that they're passing on to us, and it's more than double. So, um, and it also depends upon the, uh, water line, so if you have a one-inch water line, the new rate that will be adopted is 4,600, and it used to be 21.
Wow.
And does anybody have any sense as to what it would take to actually plum a brand-new sewer line? I mean, I, are we talking like 400, $50,000, because that's...
If you don't have a dry line?
Yeah, I'm not talking Jody's scenario where you've got an existing line, but you starting from scratch and...
Well, we've had a couple of residents look at doing that, and they've decided against it because they felt it was cost prohibitive to tie it longer distance, uh, to their, to their home.
Because I mean, that, that, that understandably...
Be huge.
Could get some serious pushback, because, I mean, if connecting to the sewer's going to eat up all your equity...
I think people would argue that the city is, uh, making it so they can't sell their home.
Yeah.
Making their home unsellable. I think there's an argument there, possibly even a potential future lawsuit.
So I can see...
Somebody can't sell their home.
Yeah.
Maybe it is, just if they've got the dry line, because what, what percentage, Corbett, would you say have homes that had, do not have a dry line that are next to the current sewer line?
Would you say dry line brings up?
So, all of, all of Thousand Oaks, it was in their HOA, or in their, um...
CCNRs?
CCNRs, that they had to run the sewer line. Don installed all of the sewer stubs to the property, and when they built, they had to install the stu, install the sewer all the way to the house, even if they installed a septic.
That's what we've got.
That's what we're talking.
Right.
So, in that case, what does that type of a connection cost looks like versus, say, like, a home like mine? I don't have anything but a septic, so for me to connect to a sewer, now let's pretend there's a sewer pipe in front of my house, okay?
I, I, I would guess anywhere from 2,000 to 10,000 bucks.
I got a quote on it, and a few years back, it was 10,000, so I don't know what that makes it now, and I have the dry line, so, and that didn't take, that was just a connection, that didn't take into account the, the city's fees and now Payson's fees.
But is it, I mean, there's, there's a lot of variables that go into that. Where's your current septic tank? Because that's where you're going to go to take it out to the street, and if that's in the back of the house, if it's 20 feet deep, if you got to put in a pump, I mean, there's a lot that goes into that.
And someone was telling me just recently that, uh, there's new state laws that require that when you do replumb from a septic tank to a sewer, you actually have to fill the septic tank, and, and so I think, I don't even know if that expense was figured into what the quote I got, I think it was just the connection, so...
Well, the EPA is really coming down on trying to get more people, um, on a septic, on a, on a sewer. Um, and so, I know the state has talked about, okay, well, you know, maybe we need to have everybody on a sewer, and that would be really detrimental to our city.
This may make sense for us to pass whatever you've got in this iteration, and then do serious research for an amendment.
Yeah, always do that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, Wayne. Oh, sorry, Mark, please.
Yeah, just a question, you guys talked about the 300-foot, uh, minimum or max minimum, whatever, 300, within 300 feet of the property line. There could be issues there where the property line may be within 300 feet of sewer line, but it may have to go through other public easements and other personal, private property to get that within that 300 feet. Does that make sense what I'm saying, and how will you address that? Normally, it, the 300 feet, or the 300-foot line has been, if you're from the residence to the sewer line, it would be the obligation of the city or the district to bring the line up to your property, and then if you're within 300 feet of that, you would connect. But to say 300 feet within the distance of the property line could bring some complications with public easements, other private property in order to get across that 300 feet.
Well, wasn't that just what Corbett was telling us, is that Don did put in the sewer lines right, right in front of everyone's home, and then everybody was required to put in the dry line, whether they used it or not, so...
But is it possible that it could be 300 feet behind you or something, like through a neighbor's lot? I mean, that's, I think that's what you're getting at, Mark.
That's exactly what I'm getting at.
So we would just need to define it as, you know, something to, to make it back, wouldn't be, 300 feet from the frontage or something.
Frontage, yeah. Because you wouldn't want it 300 feet from the back and go through your neighbor's yard.
All right, Wayne, you got that input?
I do.
Okay, all right, thanks, Mark. Okay, uh, let's go to item 12, council reports, Councilmember Hilliard.
So Utah Valley Solid Waste District, um, nothing terribly new, the new transfer station is still, um, being built and is actually picking up speed in its construction, um, now that it's no longer, you know, an Olympic-sized swimming pool. Um, so that's now drying up to a degree, and things are moving along nicely there, but beyond that, nothing to add.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kinnaston, uh, Central Utah 911?
Still nothing, Doral.
Yeah. Okay, I think he said he doesn't have anything, so, all right, thank you. Councilmember Lunt?
Um, so, we, uh, South Valley Animal Shelter, they had an audit, um, just auditing their finances, everything was good. Um, I reached out because we wanted to get the final numbers for the budget, because, um, the amount that we'll have to contribute is, is changing. I'm supposed to have those numbers by tomorrow, so, uh, she'll be sending out the budget and everything tomorrow for them, and then we'll know what our contribution is going to be, it's supposed to be less, so that's good news for our budget. Um, there is a vaccination clinic, it's not our turn this year, so, um, I don't have to do it this year. Um, we rotate between Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge, so this year is Elk Ridge's, um, turn, and it's Saturday, May 13th, from 10 to 12 at the fire...
You have a flyer or anything that we can put in the newsletter?
It's in your email.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and it's at the fire station in Elk Ridge, so, um, if you need to get your pets vaccinated, you can go there instead of here this year. Um, and then, Woodland Hills Days, just, um, I really, I, like, who I know are just the people in my ward and the ward, kind of, you know, that we split off from, so kind of the upper Woodland Hills area, and so, um, we need, I need to find some new chairs, and I'd like some new blood, or somebody down lower, um, to get involved, but I don't really know, and so I'm, if you could text me or email me names or suggestions, if you have any, that would be amazing, because I would, I would like to get some more people involved. We have the past chairs, hang on one sec, but we have the past chairs who are staying on as an, in an advisory capacity, um, that's what our past pass, you know, did for the ones that we had last year, and that helped a lot. Um, plus, you know, I'm still there, so we have that continuity, but I'm just looking for somebody new, and I'd like somebody from a new heart of town.
Yeah. Oh, I talked a little bit to the mayor about this, about the possibility of maybe, I know you don't want to hear this, Tody, but a festival committee that would just be kind of the gatekeeper to any festival that we had in town, but also would then have a charge to find those people as part of the festival committees.
Uh, I mean, that's...
From all over, and I've talked to a couple of people...
That's my job.
Uh, well, yeah, but there's a couple of people who are interested in doing it, if they, if they thought, I mean, again, it would be, you're, you're the committee, I mean, you are the committee, but then you would have other people to help you look, is what I'm saying, not that they would take it away from you. Um, there's a couple of people who have mentioned that they might be interested in being on a committee to help.
And I, I don't remember that conversation, I'm gonna, you, you may have thought you had it with me, but I don't remember a festival. Maybe we did, I don't know.
Yeah.
Um, right now, well, in this moment, just, um, I'm looking for a, a couple who would be willing to chair Woodland Hills Days. They get a lot of help, but, um, so it's not too overwhelming, except for the weekend of, it really is a lot of work. So, um, if you have any suggestions, if anyone wants to email me or text me if you have any suggestions, I am looking at everybody in the room.
I'll text you.
So I, I need everyone's suggestions, so if anybody knows anybody, please send me a message, please. Um, I really want some fresh blood, and, um, I don't want, I just think we get, you know, different ideas and different input when we have people from different parts of the community, so, um, I want to make sure we can involve everybody. Um, and then the last one is, uh, PTR, Parks, Trails and Recreation. Um, John Wallace did resign, he stepped down, um, he's just so, I had a, I called him on Sunday and had a really good conversation with him, he's so awesome, but he's so involved in so many things. Um, he's got the, the snow plowing, which I think burnt him and everybody else out this winter, um, and then fire, and then planning and zoning, and that's a lot, and he feels like, um, he wants to probably help a little bit more with fire, and so that's why he stepped down from PTR. So, we do need more members for...
Sewers?
Yes, and so, um, if you know, and I've had a couple of people reach out that I'm going to reach out to and encourage them, um, the gentleman that came that, um, came last meeting, um, I, that was concerned about the trail, I want to get his name, I think he'd be a good one, actually, to be on the committee, um, he works for the DNR.
Oh, Bishop's stuff.
Mike Slager.
Yeah, I think he might be somebody good, okay, so I'll write that down. I was just going to reach out to him, because he has a lot of, even when I was campaigning, he had a lot of interest in the trail, and so I was going to see if I could talk him into joining the committee. Anyway, so if, if you have any ideas or anybody to reach out, again, um, I, I'm just asking for help on those, so, yeah. And I think that's it.
Thanks, Janet.
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Malkovich, legislative session.
Legislative session is obviously over. It only goes six weeks. There were 244 bills that we as cities tracked, 152 of those passed. Now, some of them are being enacted, some of them will take place May 1st, some will be July 1st, some will be, you know, not till the new year, but each of them will, are coming in their, in their own time, the 252 that impact our city. Um, the interim meetings start, uh, in May, middle of May, and then we'll start the whole process over. Um, these aren't times when they actually make decisions, but this is when all of the preliminary stuff is being put into... but this is when all of the preliminary stuff is being put into place so that they're ready to pass or fail during legislative session. Um, and so I'll be keeping track on that, and I'm also going to continue to try to find uh some legislators to run particular bills for us, you know, maybe snowplow issues. So I'm still, I've been reaching out, and I also found somebody for you, Dudson, who is willing to run a bill that you would like. So I'm going to, I told, I talked to him on Saturday again, and he's willing to have a sit-down meeting to talk about all the issues, because I couldn't remember them all. But uh founding, finding a couple of people who will run things for us. Um, also on emergency management, you know, we have the city side, but we also have the county side. So on the county side, um, we have meetings, monthly, day, daily updates um on, for the state and county every day. Um, and so one of the things is the state hydrologist is coming on Tuesday again to talk to us like last time and give us an update. Um, there, it's supposed to get in the high seventies, maybe even eighties in a couple of days over the, after the weekend. And so wants to give us uh more of a report on possible flooding. Um, some cities, it will, we, our snow has melted pretty good, but they are worried a little bit about if the avalanche, you know, slides. So we're keeping an eye on that. Um, and I have a report to give to Peter Quitner on flood mitigation. And I've been, I talked to Corbett about that, that's, we found out about it today and it's due tomorrow. So any possible funding, the state, the state um declared an emergency, which basically that just means it opens it up for counties and cities to maybe receive some state funds. And so we're just identifying if we think we may need state funds. Right now, we're not thinking that we do, but we could possibly put in, you know, a few things. So I'm working with Corbett on that. And then just to let you know, last week while we were in St. George, it was the Great Shakeout, and we had um two people come and do, participate on behalf of our city with ham radio communications throughout the state, we, throughout the county, and it worked really well. And um I was really glad that they were able to do that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Pratt.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. And for me, uh, SESD, I, I do just wanna give a brief update on that. So uh they're, they're looking, we're looking very closely. So as everyone, maybe not everyone, but a lot of people know, they, they've historically limited the amount of panels that can be installed on a roof. And I, I just think that with the uh, the energy crisis that we're facing, they are seriously looking at upping that to twenty-five kilowatt hours per house. And uh the, where it's at now in terms of the process is um, they do want to hire an engineer to make sure that it's not going to have a negative impact on the existing system. I was talking to Mike Morris today, actually, about solar, and, you know, he's obviously very enthusiastic about the prospects of solar. But um, you know, I, I, I do feel that as a trustee on the board, I, I think that it's part of my obligation to make sure that, you know, the engineering is sound with respect to adding new um, new paneling. So, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak to why that would be an issue or why there's concern that that might be an issue. But I do think that as a steward of the system, uh, it is the wise choice to make sure that it wouldn't have a negative impact. And I do feel that there's a fairly broad support for it, provided it can be done without harming.
But it needs to go one step further because, right, because I have solar. If the power goes out, I also don't have solar power because of the way the system's set up. So if the power goes out, my solar doesn't work either. And that's a, that's a, that's a function of the way SESD has in their regulations and the way that it's connected to their system. There needs to be, there, there needs to be the availability to residents. If you're gonna put solar on your home, a little bit of an emergency management thing that if power were to go out, we could still have power because we have solar. Like, it, it's kinda not fair.
Yeah, I was not aware that that was an issue, so I think.
Yes, you know.
Yeah. You should come to a board meeting and uh express that concern because uh I, I, I don't have solar, so I can't speak to those particulars. But I think that if that is something, I mean, you know, I, I can, I can relay it, and then I can bring back.
Or ask about it.
Yeah.
But see, when, when we hooked up, it was, it was actually written in their rules that if you were caught doing that, like making it so that you bypassed it, so that you could, that they could, they would kick you off of SESD, they would kick you off of their system. So it was in either or, either your solar, basically, they owned it and it went into their system, and you have no control over it, or, you know, they kick you off.
Well, the one thing I can, in, in, in the time that I've been on the board, there is no incentive for anybody to make it hard to uh bring solar into the system that I have seen, other than the potential harm that it brings to the existing infrastructure. So, I mean, if, if they're, uh, so to the extent.
And that's, I mean, that was, we've had solar for eight years, so, I mean, that was a while ago, right?
Yeah.
But maybe the rules have changed, but I know the way ours was set up, if the power goes out, we also don't have solar.
Yeah, no, I, and, and I, I think that that would be something that, that, that should look, they should look at, or we should look at. But I uh, I don't, I don't know why that would be the case. But, but if that is, then I think that would be another um, another area. Right now, I've just been, we've been focused on trying to find resources. And so adding the, the availability of solar panels, again, limited as it is in terms of the, an, an energy resource. I mean, it, it doesn't provide, it, it doesn't fill the gap that closing down a lot of the existing uh previous resources.
And I think uh, I think, you know, it was popular back when we got it. And there were, there were some government incentives then, and I think they were afraid too many people were gonna get it. I think that's why it was so restrictive at the time, they were afraid too many people. Because we um, when we got it, there was a government thing where if you got a new roof and solar at the same time, then basically, we got a nine thousand dollar rebate on our taxes. So we got a new roof and new solar at the same time, and we, on, on our taxes, we got nine thousand dollar rebate back. I mean, not that we ended up with nine thousand in our pocket, because we didn't, but it was a discount on our taxes, so it was nice.
But I can ask about that. I, I, but if you want a, a more conversational type of.
I'm friends with one of them, I could ask.
Okay.
I'll ask.
Then I won't do it. Okay, uh, that's everything for me. Any upcoming agenda items?
I forgot to just mention that May sixth is our, our Be Ready Woodland Hills Expo, and um, and so it's gonna be really fun, and we have some speakers coming, we have lots of booths, and we have some fun, um, yeah, oh, the hot dogs and the chili, of course, is what everybody wants to come for. But fire will have some, the things Craig has, the um, I hope you're still having the helicopter.
As I say, did you expand that a little bit this year?
Yeah, and then we have, so then, and, and Deputy Dudson is having an impairment thing coming, and then we have. Yeah, and then a um, and then the county has their map check coming, and um, so there, and there's gonna be a couple of speakers, and then as well as all the different booths, so it should be really fun.
There's gonna be several fire people, I guess, that are out of town, though. I've been talking to Jenny, so um if any of us, as councilmembers, if we can come, she's asked that, you know, we come and be bodies and help.
Yeah, and we have a lot of volunteers from, from emergency management volunteers who will be there as well.
Okay.
Okay, great, well, then let's adjourn the uh work session and reconvene at nine ten for the city council meeting.
We still have one of those.
All right, uh, we will uh bring the city council meeting uh, or begin the city council meeting uh with uh councilmember Malkovich, if you would lead us in the pledge, and councilmember Lunt, if you would offer the invocation.
Yes, I'll rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're so grateful that we could meet this evening as councilmembers, city employees, and members of the community so that we can discuss things for our community and try to be mindful of what will be best for all the citizens and for our community as a whole. And heavenly Father, please help us in our decision processes that we will keep this in mind and that we will also be mindful of our budget and the things that we need to take care of. And we're so grateful for this opportunity to serve and to help each other. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, um, public comment. So this uh will open our public comment portion. Um, if there's anybody here that cares to uh say something, now's your chance. Hey, and it doesn't look like anybody's online, so we will close the public comment portion and move on to business and discussion. Item eighteen, resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, appointing Ted Mickelson as city fire chief.
So Doral really should be the one to uh make this motion. And I feel bad that we can't.
He can, you know, he got figured it out.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've got you.
Oh, thank you, Dave. I, I really appreciate, I appreciate that. I move that we do approve Ted Mickelson as our fire chief.
Okay, that's a motion by councilmember Kinnison, the second by councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Woo!
Welcome to the ranks. All right, so now we do the swearing in.
Come on up.
Yeah.
We all swear, I mean, never.
That comes later.
There's the swearing in, and then there's the swearing out.
Swearing out comes later.
Yeah.
Step up close.
So Ted, this is uh in first person, so this is uh what you will actually read. So if you would raise your right hand and, and recite that.
I would just laugh. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item twenty, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three twelve, adopting a voting method for the twenty twenty-three municipal election. So Jody, how would we structure, how would you recommend we structure this motion? Assuming we get anyone to make such a motion. Would it be for a particular type of voting, or is it basically in favor of ranked choice voting?
I will make a motion. I'm going to make a motion that, I'm getting to the that. That we um go ahead with ranked choice voting. Um, based on the ease of the process, um, the nicer parts of it, and also um the, the way that it saves our community money in our budget. Um, I would like, with the caveat, that we speak with the county um about the reporting issues, because it did cause some confusion last time. So I think there needs to be some clarity there, but I would like to make a motion that we go forward with ranked choice voting.
Okay, so that's a conditional motion, then, that we speak to the county, by we, I'm guessing that would be Jody.
Yes.
Speak to the county about getting clarification on the reporting mechanism.
The, to me, the only real downside of the ranked choice voting was the reporting and the confusion. We had candidates that um in round one were in second position, and then by round two, they had dropped to the bottom, and vice versa. In round one, you know, they, like, we talked about Doral was like in third, but then by round two, he had, you know, he had won. So I, I think there needs to be some clarification and some better reporting.
Okay, is that, do you have the language you need for that motion? Okay, motion by uh councilmember Lunt, seconded by councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, that motion carries. Um, award, awarding contract for solid waste and recycling services uh to Waste Management.
I'll make a motion that we award the contract to Waste Management.
I'll second it.
Okay, a motion by councilmember Hilliard, with a second by councilmember Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. So Jody, item twenty-two. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, so motion by councilmember Pratt.
I'll second it.
Second by councilmember Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or was that an aye or a nay?
It's aye.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item twenty, oh, motion carries. Item twenty-three, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash three, amending ordinance twenty twenty-two eight, low rate for fire hydrants.
A motion.
Oh, go ahead.
A motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
A motion by councilmember Malkovich, seconded by councilmember Pratt. Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three thirteen, adopting the mass notification in a local cooperative agreement.
A motion to accept that, um, uh, and also knowledge that it's ever bridge.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, by councilmember Malkovich, with a second by councilmember Lunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item twenty-five, policy and procedure.
That'd be tabled, right?
We'll revisit that one. Item twenty-six, uh, amending ordinance, or ordinance twenty twenty-three four, amending city code ten eleven eight A regarding culverts. So that is also to be tabled, and uh we'll work on that one. Uh, item twenty-seven, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash five, adopting a zone change for five fifty South Woodland Hills Drive.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by councilmember Lunt.
I'll second that.
Seconded by councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, now that's it. Um, I would like to enter a closed session briefly. Wayne?
Um, I'm unclear on the culverts one, why you're, are we waiting on that? I don't noted any changes that we're going to make to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So.
That, that, for some reason, I was thinking that we were going to discuss that one first.
The sewer one, we are, that's.
Okay.
So let's vote on the culverts?
Yeah, so we'll vote on the culvert one.
I'll take a motion.
Okay, a motion by uh councilmember Hilliard.
I'll second.
Seconded by councilmember Malkovich. All in favor?
Uh, that's an ordinance.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Uh, councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Doral, okay.
Okay, that's a yes by councilmember Kinnison. Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thanks, Wayne. Sorry.
I'll make a motion when we go into closed session.
Okay, so, and just to clarify.
I'll second it.
Okay, um, pending a reasonably imminent litigation, so. Motion by, thanks everyone for being here.
Thank you. Congratulations, chief.
Yep.
Yeah, congratulations.
Chief and chief.
Yeah, Craig left, or I would've said chief and chief.
Chiefs.
Okay, well, uh, all in favor of entering closed session. Jody, did you get all the?
Aye. Ah. We let him in the.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, Pratt, motion seconded by Hilliard, all in favor, aye. Okay, needing a adjourn.